You got it. Hello, good evening. We're going to call this Board of Education meeting to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. So great seeing so many people here tonight, and I think people are starting to join us online. So let's get started. Is that me? Sorry about that. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Christina. I see a second there by Ms. Kostin. Okay, all in favor, since we're all in person, we can just do a show of hands. Thank you. That passes eight zero. Okay, moving on to my favorite part of being on the Board of Education, the student and staff recognitions, and we have a lot tonight. I think it's going to be a combination of in-person and online. As a result, Dr. Jones and I have been signing a lot of certificates, which we're really excited about, but since there'll be some confusion handing it out tonight, or obviously hard to hand it out virtually, we will deliver all of these to the high school tomorrow. Or assuming we don't have a snow day, kidding. Okay. So with that, first up is our honoring, our Director of Athletics, Gus Lundine. Is he here? See online? And I know he's being honored by Mr. Mayo and Mr. Meskers. I see Mr. Meskers online, and I think Mr. Mayo's online. Let me get my participant.
I just promoted Ralph.
Great. So that means Mr. Mayo goes first, but let's see, do you see Gus?
I'm not seeing Gus online.
Well, because he does the next recognitions, exactly. Right. He's not here, right? To the National Merit. Yeah. Well, Ralph, did you, can you find Gus? Otherwise, we're going to have to skip ahead three to National Merit, because Gus is.
The, the head coaches are panelists currently for the, for the next two, so they could handle their own.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Mayo, hold on a second. We're going to come back to you. We are going to pivot, and instead, let's honor the girls volleyball state championship team. So can we have Mr. Lappam?
Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me all right? Thumbs up? Yeah, okay. Thank you to the Board of Education for recognizing our student athletes this evening. I would like to join in congratulating Coach Heller, his coaching staff, and the girls swim and dive team for another dominating season in the pool, as they always do. And personally, I know we can't find him right now. I would like to thank my friend Gus Lundine for the 17 years of being our Athletic Director and supporting the many sports and athletes that have participated at Greenwich High School. Now, on to the volleyball team. The volleyball team started out the season ranked number one in the state, which put a lot of pressure on us, but we finished the year and stayed number one the entire season. The team won the FCAC Western Division with a 15-1 record and won the FCAC Championship, beating Ward, Trumbull, and Darien in the final. The team cruised through the state tournament, beating Bristol Central, Wilton, Darien again, and Fairfield Ludlow in the final. We beat them 3-0. Our final record was 26-1. As far as some accolades for the players, Leona Sarkisian was recently named as the Gatorade Player of the Year for Connecticut. Leona and Adele Satu were both recognized as AVCA All-Americans, the youngest and the brightest. They were Connecticut All-State Members and First Team All-FCAC Players. Additional players Maggie Salibi, Lucia Spaniel, and Sophie Jones also received All-FCAC recognition. And just by the way, last year, we did finish undefeated in a shortened season due to the pandemic, and that team did not get to get to be recognized. But it is now my honor and pleasure to announce the players, coaches, and manager of the Greenwich Cardinal Volleyball Team. I don't know if any of them are there. I think most of them are virtual. So I will just go through the list. If anyone's there, stand up and wave. Our manager, Ben Bowers, Joy Hudra, Hannah Fisher, Isabella Ursig, Skylar Wilson, Jennifer Andia, Grace Darnow, Lana Corson, Madeline Cooper, Haley Dionis, Cassidy Bonney, Catherine Ford, Lucia Spaniel, Maggie Salibi, Captain Sophie Jones, Captain Leanna Sarkisian, and Captain Adele Satju. I'd also like to recognize our coaches, Coach Megan Puff, Coach Eric Robinson, and Coach Olivia Trainor, who did an outstanding job as a fairly, a pretty new crew of coaches. So thank you for the recognition. We appreciate it. And best to everyone.
Kathleen, can I ask Coach Lappam a question?
I think you can.
How did I know this was coming?
Coach Lappam, I, I do have a question. Could you tell me how many years you've been coaching girls volleyball at Greenwich High School?
That would be 29, Joe.
29 years, and you spent a couple of decades, 20 years, coaching the boys rugby program as well?
That is correct. That would be 49 banquets with a lot of chicken dinners, Joe.
Steve Lappam.
I am stepping down, so I do want to let you know that.
I'm very hard, sorry to hear that. I was going to say a few more nice things about you, if that's okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Steve Lappam, Coach Lappam, is an unsung hero. He's been coaching thousands of students at Greenwich High School for the last almost 30 years. He's influenced these kids in an incredibly positive way. I had the pleasure and honor of taking over the Greenwich High School Rugby Team from Steve Lappam after 20 years of, of service to our community. The shoes were huge that I had to jump into, but I hope I filled them okay. Steve has affected so many kids in a positive way. He just, it does not get recognized enough, because every season just keeps going by, and he's a perfectionist when it comes to his craft. I am very proud, and I've known Steve for about 23 years. I'm very proud to call him a friend, and I don't call a lot of people friends. I call Steve Lapp a friend of mine. Thank you for all you do, Steve.
Thank you, Joe. Same to you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Steve, and congratulations to this wonderful team. Okay, next up is girls swimming and diving, also state champions, and can we have Mr. Heller, please?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brendan Heller, and this is my first year coaching Greenwich High School Swimming and Diving, so I'm, I got 28 years to catch up on Coach Lappam, but congratulations to the volleyball program as well. I'm going to keep it pretty brief, because I have a large roster here to recognize with our swim program, but I wanted to thank Gus Lundine. I know he's not on the call right now, but in the entire Greenwich community for the support and overwhelming support that it was this entire fall season, and we were very successful in the sense that no, no one beat us. It was a perfect season. We had several state champions. We have several All-Americans, and we dominated. So for, for me, my first year, this was, this was a privilege to lead this team, and I look forward to hopefully many more years of success coaching Greenwich High School. So I'd first like to thank my assistant coaches, Kevin Thompson and Aaron Ritz, and now I'll get into the recognition of all these varsity athletes here for our swimming and diving team. If you're there, please stand up and identify yourself. If you're on the Zoom call here, congratulations on a great season. So for our freshmen, we have Senna Boskert, Michelle Weisler, Garan Finns, Emma Stamen. Sophomores, Sophie Wang, Peyton Foster, Sydney G., Annabelle Guanera, Ava Bain, Tess Ferno, Julia Costello, Helena Kennedy, Natsu Nishizawa. For our juniors, Daisy Decker, Sabina Sack, Matilda Mancini, Samantha Ings. And for our senior class, we have nine. Captain Katerina Lee, Captain Isabella Malco, Captain Emerson Robinson, Captain Esme Merrill, as well as Sophia Sitchnick, Olivia Knapp, Paulina Finns, Evangeline Norman, Olivia Bain, and Daniela Pampa. For our divers, we had Mackenzie Newey, Ellie Scharf, Javier Garcia, Francesca Kim, Annie Bengal, and Lauren Priest. So congratulations to all the members of our team, and thank you again to the community for your overwhelming support, and hopefully looking forward to years of continued success for all these student athletes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Heller. This is known to be quite a program, and we're excited that you're leading it.
Thank you.
Okay, have we found Mr. Lundine? Excellent, there he is. All right, that's the way to go out and retire, Gus, is to make sure you show up a little bit late. That's why you're heading to retirement, right? You can relax.
My apologies, please.
No worries. All right, Mr. Mayo, we let you go first. You're on mute, Ralph.
Yeah, Mr. Lundine, he thought he was going to get away with this, and he's the type of person that does, shies away from the spotlight. This is very difficult for him to be honored in this public banter, but no one deserves more credit for the achievements of the athletic program at Greenwich High School over the last 18 years than Gus does. Gus is behind the scenes. He's always fixing things that are, that have, that always seem to go wrong all the time, and he fixes them, and nobody knows about it. He supports his coaches. He support, he cares deeply about his student athletes. He is just someone that you would want around your, your children at all times. He's the, and he is also, I have to say this, one of my best friends in the world. I've known him for over 30 years, and I am going to miss him a great deal, as are the students, student athletes, and the coaches of Greenwich High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you can speak, Gus, we would also like Mr. Meskers, State Representative Meskers, to share a few words about you. You guys see him or not? Okay, while I'm texting him, can I have a, I imagine Mr. Kelly's going to want to interject something, so maybe I can give the floor to you.
Thank you for asking. Gus, I hope you don't mind me saying a few things about you. I met Gus in 2007 as a parent of student athletes. My, several of my kids played multiple sports at the high school, and I met Gus as a parent. I then worked for Gus for 10 years, and it was a very interesting 10 years. We didn't always agree on everything, but we were certainly willing to listen. He was willing to listen. We had great discussions on a lot of topics, and I had the pleasure and honor of working with Gus over the last two, two and a half years in a capacity where we worked on Cardinal Stadium together and a number of other things. Gus has a very strong moral compass, which I found to be one of his really, really strong features. He, he's always fair. He has a lot of competing interests in his job over the last 17 or 18 years, and in those competing interests, he found a way of being fair to everybody. Everybody walked away, not always happy, but no one thought that anyone got a better treatment than they got when comparing how they did when talking to Gus. And the most important thing I felt was, was a key feature, something that I share in common with him, was Gus absolutely 100% of the time had the interest of the kids at, in, in forefront of everything he did. And, and that's something we shared, and that's how come we were able to work together so closely over the years in those three different capacities. If, if being an A.D. was a sport, Gus would be the state champion.
Kathleen, can I add on something to that? Kathleen, could I add something to that?
Absolutely.
I, I just want to let everybody that's viewing tonight know that Mr. Lundine's a member of the FCAC Hall of Fame, which there's very few members of that club at the high school, and he is one of them. And as well as leading Greenwich High School to be named the top athletic program in Connecticut several times over the last 17 years. So Gus Gus cares so much, and it's, he was up at that stadium, as Joe Kelly pointed out, every day. I thought, I kept telling him, that's not your house, Gus, but that's how he treated it when it was being built. He treated it as if it was going to be his home, and he wanted it to be special for the athletes of Greenwich High School. So just wanted to get, say that about my, my friend and now retiree, Gus Lundine.
All right. I haven't heard back from Mr. Meskers, but that just means that maybe, Gus, we can get him to honor you at the Capitol. But why don't we turn it over to you? Can you say a few words?
I'd be more than happy to. First of all, thank you very, very much, members of the board, Dr. Jones, Ralph, Mayo. Thank you so much for sharing some very kind words. Ralph is correct. I do tend to try to take a step back and let the student athletes and coaches and teams of Greenwich High School deserve be able to be recognized for all their successes, and what they deserve, and be only out in front of them when they need me to be to defend or support them. So I really do thank you for this recognition. It was certainly not necessary. I think just being able to be called the Athletic Director at Greenwich High School for the last 17 years is certainly enough of an honor that I really don't think that I need much more than that. I, I will really miss the people of Greenwich, Greenwich High School, all our coaches, teachers, administrative staff there, the custodians, the folks that take care of our fields, you know, the list is endless. All those people that have made our athletic program really second to none, and one that I will always regard very, in a very special place in my heart. So again, thank you so, so much. I really do appreciate it, and I certainly will be following the Cardinals. I won't go away that easily. I'll always be there rooting for them, and, and making sure that our athletic program continues to do all the things that we have felt are so, so, so important, and it's just not the wins and losses. It's, it's all the other things that I think our kids do such a great job, and our coaches do such a great job with, and providing such a fantastic image of our community through athletics. So thank you very much. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Gus. Sorry that I didn't get to have any of my children there with, with you there, but I know that you certainly left a legacy. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Next up, we will turn to a final group of recognitions, a very important one, Ms. Nadell.
Okay, I am here. I'm, I just need to be, get my video started by mic. Hello, everybody. Greetings from my work at home. I am very pleased to have this opportunity to honor the accomplishments of a very select group of Greenwich High School seniors. The mission of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation is to recognize the academically talented students of the United States. I'm going to begin our recognition with our semifinalists, who are in especially strong candidate pool this year, and it is very likely that they will be named finalists later on this school year. We very much appreciate the hard work and dedication to excellence that all of these students we're recognizing this evening have exhibited as members of the Greenwich High School community, and we appreciate that they bring welcome and positive recognition to our school and to the town of Greenwich. I'm going to begin by calling the names of the students who were semifinalists in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Competition. From Bella House, we have Ella Moore and Eduardo Suarez. From Clark House, Charles Adorni, Lucy Bai, and Stephen Blank. From Folsom House, Thomas Bodson, Benjamin Shi, Patrick Sullivan, Calista Wolf, Joanna Zhang. And from Sheldon House, Benjamin Cooper. Next up, we have our Greenwich High School commended students in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. From Bella House, we have Eva Anderson, Adam Kaufman, Anna Weixner, and Nicole Nguyen. From Canter House, we have Margot Delaney, Joelle Jensen, Pretti Kura, Matthew McCoo. From Clark House, we have Santiago Borrego, Garcia Concho, Nima Gupta, Arsh Jane, Bryce Metallos, Caitlin Skamen, Victor Stroy, Alicia Tang, Cecile Whittle, Caroline Yu, and Justin Zeig. From Folsom House, we have Michaela Browning, Emily Daplin, Alexander Ignitev, Alexa Nakonishi, Luke Rutkowski, Javier Sarah, and Charles Zolin. From Sheldon House, we have Bennett Chung, Alexandra Fenaroli, Andrew Lowit, Esme Merrill, Jean Newwald, Rachel Rosier, Daniel Ruel, and Rohan Submaranian. Congratulations to our commended students. Next, we have three individual recognition programs, and all of these students are designated scholars. In the College Board National Indigenous Recognition Program, designated scholar from Folsom House is Kiana Jennings. In the College Board National African-American Recognition Program, our designated scholars from Clark House are Skylar Scavo, and from Sheldon House, Kwame Boateng. And then we have our College Board National Hispanic Recognition Program Designated Scholars. From Bella House, Jordan Cervantes, Dominique Isaacs, Sophia Jansen, Natalia Steglitz. From Canter House, Isabella Latuda, Carolina Rivera, Victoria Rivera. From Clark House, Isabel Harper, Alastair Wilson. And from Folsom House, Carlos Conejo, Sebastian Lopez, Javier Sarah, and Noah Weinberg. Those are all of our National Merit students, and thank you, students, again for making us look good. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. That's an impressive number of National Merit scholars. Thank you so much, Ms. Nadell.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we are turning to the public hearing. Unfortunately, I hear Kwame is sick, and so my understanding is that Sean Murza and Javi Sarah are going to speak with us tonight. I don't, oh, there they are, sorry. Yeah, come on down. Thanks, guys.
Good evening, Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board, and meeting attendees. I'm Javi Sarah, Senior Class President at Greenwich High School. In a few days, students will sit down in their classrooms and undertake a seemingly ancient task, midterm exams. After a two-year hiatus, these cumulative assessments are back at GHS, and students cannot be more terrified. In the buildup to exams, student government presented the GHS administration with a midterm proposal, from which several accommodations were accepted. These included a flexible waiting system and a Block 1 through 8 review day. Essentially, each midterm will count as normal or as half of the usual waiting, depending on which is more beneficial to each student. Overall, the student government is grateful for Mr. Mayo's open ears and pleased that our input was implemented, but students are still overwhelmingly disappointed and anxious with high levels of stress that the current learning environment has induced. With rapidly spreading Omicron and snow days and delays, learning at GHS in recent weeks has been difficult and disrupted. This has left classes far behind in their curriculum timeline and forced teachers to accelerate work in an effort to catch up. Students are overwhelmed with their increasingly demanding workloads. Last Thursday was the final day for marking Period 2 tests to be administered and projects and essays to be due. Such a deadline was something student government was a strong proponent of. However, this was before we missed so much class time. In practice, this policy left students with a test or project in almost every class on a single day. Though this experience is now in the past, and it is clear that midterms are going to happen, I think we have an opportunity to reexamine our midterm and final exam system going forward to ensure this kind of stress is not replicated in the future. These assessments are administered for two reasons: to ensure that students have a comprehensive grasp on the course's curriculum and to prepare students for future exams at the college level. But I fear that we are failing on both fronts. Due to the lost time, some teachers are either rushing through material or skipping units entirely, entirely in order to keep pace leading up to the midterm period. Teachers should never be put in a position where they have to either sacrifice core, course content or inundate their students with piles of work at the end of the semester just to hit requirements for the midterm exam. Hopefully, this unprecedented loss of school time will be a one-time incident, but nonetheless, I think it should remind us all that the mastery of course content happens in the classroom, not by cramming for 105-minute exam. Midterms and finals should offer a value opportunity for students to take what they've learned and take it to a higher level by applying it. I've always been disconcerted by the prospect that midterms and finals prepare us for college finals. This notion suggests that the two are correlated, but the vast majority of teachers are not actively in contact with professors regarding what college finals are actually like. Here lies the greatest opportunity for policy change at Greenwich High School. Program administrators should be in contact with college professors, and midterms should be structured with their input. I think traditional high-stakes midterm I think traditional high-stakes midterm exams should be completely reevaluated and reimagined in the future to better align with the typical college experience. Maybe humanities classes have a take-home essay instead of a timed sit-down test. Maybe certain courses support students in conducting research or developing innovative cumulative projects. Students should not just master course content on a multiple-choice exam, but apply that content in creative ways. Midterms can be beneficial and less stressful to students, but we just need to change the way in which they're administered. As always, thank you for this opportunity and for offering your time here tonight. I look forward to speaking with you all in a month's time.
Thank you very much, Javi. Welcome, Sean.
Good evening, Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board, and meeting attendees. I am Sean Mirza, Vice President of Student Concerns at Greenwich High School, and I'm speaking in Kwame's place tonight. Thank you for having me. As you know, COVID mitigation strategies at Greenwich High School have increased considerably in January. These strategies are not substantive. For example, classes are run regularly in person, and that is safe with COVID. However, clubs have been forced to go virtual for the month of January, supposedly because of the surge of COVID cases, making it too dangerous. Clubs take place in the exact same classrooms, usually with a lower number of people. It seems impossible for the building to be safe for class during the day and not for clubs shortly after. Our administration preaches social and emotional well-being, yet they have deprived students of a key social interaction of high school, meeting for clubs in person. I wholeheartedly agree with protecting students and doing everything in our power to keep us in school. Nonetheless, I believe the same safety that has been achieved in our schools' basketball courts and hockey rinks can be reached within clubs and COVID mitigation for the long run. Clubs are usually a very small amount of students meeting during flex time, something that had been explicitly created this year in hopes of clubs becoming more accessible to all students. The inconsistent application of COVID mitigation strategies is frustrating to these passionate students who care about their community. It is disheartening for us to be unable to meet while wearing our masks and socially distance, yet see Plexiglas that has been proven to be ineffective brought back to our student center, or having a one-way glass corridor that makes us walk on the freezing cold, ice-covered sidewalks and down slippery, mud-covered hills. As we all know, COVID does not discriminate. And all I ask is that our administration be consistent with their stance on COVID, make decisions based on scientific fact, and reconsider these unnecessary and unhelpful mitigation strategies that hinder the student experience at Greenwich High School. Thank you again for the opportunity to share the students' perspectives and experiences with you tonight.
Thank you so much, Sean. Thank you. Next up, GEA Liv. She here?
I see Lil online. I just gave her talking permissions.
Thank you. Go ahead, Lil.
All right, all right. You gave me talking permission. You sure you want to do that, Mike? Okay, good evening, board members, teachers, parents, students, community members. I'm Lilin Peron, President of the Greenwich Education Associations. First, I'd like to start off with congratulations to the girls' state championship diving and swimming teams, and also to the GHS girls' state championship volleyball teams. Great job on your victory as state champions. A great honor. Thank you. I also like to thank Athletic Director Mr. Gus Landeen for his years of service to the Greenwich Public Schools and leading one of the best athletic programs in the state of Connecticut and supporting our coaches and all our athletes along that road to success. I wish you well, Gus. Well, welcome to our 2022 school year. Before I move forward to talk about the new year, I want to take a short reflection on over the past two years during our COVID. I think I like to call it something different, you know, maybe cookies or id. It just seems so much nicer. What have we learned? What have we achieved? We've laughed, we've cried, what we endured. Our essential workers have gone unnoticed, unrecognized, not giving the respect and honor they deserve until 2020, when the whole world did change. Our hospital doctors, nursing and medical support staff were saving lives. Our police, fire, and public works were keeping us safe. Our parents were doing the best they could to help with supporting teachers, their children, and the educational process during hybrid learning. Our dedicated nursing staff, led by Mary Keller, keeping our students and staff safe, along with long hours of contact tracing. Our custodians kept our buildings clean, our security team who kept us safe, our paras and all the support staff that showed up every day to support teaching and learning. Teaching, the most important profession on the planet. Yes, I'm biased, but I do have the microphone right now. A profession that has gone also unnoticed until 2020, when the whole world changed, and so did we as teachers. Our Greenwich teachers turned on a dime, rose to the challenge, and are still continuing to take on any new challenges. We pivoted. We went hybrid, the only school system in Connecticut to be in school all year. We learned technologies, new ways to teach. We Googled, screencastified, Schoology. We flipped grid. We figured it out. We did it together, many of us, with their own families to care for and children to teach at home. Now we start this new year, 2022, still enduring COVID, Omicron, and we continue to be professionals for our students, not only to teach them, but also to support them in their physical and mental well-being. Now, I know you all probably heard and were aware of the statewide teacher-initiated blackout by CEA, which GEA we do support for all schools in Connecticut to have their supplies, tests, mitigation strategies in place to keep students and staff safe. Teachers at Greenwich did participate in wearing black, but we did not do a full, organized teacher event. As I stated in the paper, it was just not the right timing for Greenwich. Greenwich Public Schools, we had our masks, we had our test supplies, and mitigation strategies were already well in place. But that does not mean the struggle still does not continue for our teachers. Teachers are still facing overwhelming daily struggles as they continue to persevere teaching at its best through this pandemic to provide our students with an outstanding, rigorous education. Teachers still walk into a minefield of challenges every single day, knowing, not knowing what's going to hit them next. How many staff will be out? What's going to change in today's schedule as a result? How many students are quarantined? Who tested positive? Who's okay? Are we okay? Are themselves exposed? Our teachers have proven that we can do great things. We continue to take on challenges that come our way. We are professionals. We deserve more than just praise. I like to thank our parents for our continued support. But I'd like to let everyone know, our Board of Ed and BET, that our teachers need more than just praise this year. Thank you, and let's have a great year.
Thank you so much, Lil. Next up, Representative from PTA, Mimi Duff. Is she online? I don't see her here.
You can hear me, yeah?
I can. Go ahead, Mimi.
Okay, cool. Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, and other members of the Board of Education. I'm Mimi Duff, President of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of all their members. I want to begin my comments by acknowledging our teachers, administrators, custodial staff, cafeteria workers, and others supporting the day-to-day operations of our school district. Thank you. We know the work you're doing has gotten harder, not easier, as we continue to navigate COVID with recent spikes in case counts among students and staff. We know our teachers are carrying an additional load as they cover for sick colleagues, et cetera. We appreciate you, and we would love to help in any way possible. Moving on to tonight's agenda, I have several comments. I'll start by giving a big shout-out to Mike Reed and the Big Ideas Math Implementation and the recent math workshop organized by our academic excellence team. We're hearing great things, so keep up the good work. In tonight's STEM report, we see goals to improve grades five and eight science scores, but we aren't seeing measurable goals in math. Specifically, the goals laid out for math teachers include teacher clarity, feedback, discussion, instruction, and practice. These all seem to be elements of an effective teaching process, but not necessarily measurable or time-based goals. We talk about SMART goals, specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. Without SMART goals, how do we hold ourselves accountable? There used to be a goal to have 75% of the eighth graders in the district complete Algebra I. Is that still a district goal? If so, where are we and what is the timeframe to achieve the goal? Goals like this could help inform the work on the strategic plan, for instance. Sticking to SMART goals and focusing on measurable, have the science and math scores improved at Hamilton Avenue since the start of the Steam Magnet Program? Why are scores missing on the update report? The progress column as complete or ongoing is a little thin on details. Onto the science research program. Wow, what a roster. Each of the accomplishments detailed in the report is more impressive than the next. It's no wonder that they wrote a book about Andy Bermonte's science research class. Why isn't this the district explicitly providing financial support for such an amazing program? As I understand it, the program largely relies on parent contributions and matches to the school for winners. Why isn't this program explicitly funded? Regarding a public comment, we don't support cutting public comment to two minutes. The public comment period is a chance for our elected officials to hear what our taxpayers and community are thinking and for others to listen to ongoing debates in the district. Our families deserve an opportunity to be heard. As an example of how important the comment period is, we can hopefully all agree that the independent sped review was long overdue and needed in our district. Without the parent comment and hearing the struggles and the individual stories of families in our district, would you, the Board of Ed, have made recommendations for an independent sped review? We need to continue to hear from our families, and we don't support a two-minute limit. Finally, it's budget time. We remain very concerned about the state of disrepair in many of our buildings and general lack of maintenance. We urge our elected BET members to tour the buildings in focus to help educate themselves. We look after our homes, and we are urging the BET to look after our students' home-away-from-homes in supporting our teachers, staff, and importantly, our buildings and infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mimi. Appreciate it. All right, so that takes us to community comments. A few people, I guess, dropped off the list, but it looks like-
Kathleen, can I ask a question before we get into the community comment? Would that be okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, well, I guess I'm assuming we're going to hear something about masks and other COVID protective things. So I just want to go over a couple of things if that's okay to make sure we're on the same page. The Governor's Executive Order still stands, which kind of ties our hands when making decisions on whether our kids have to and not have to wear masks or other protective COVID issues. That still stands presently.
That's my understanding, yes.
And I understand, too, that that executive order is scheduled to end, is it February 15th?
Okay.
Yes. So I just want to make, make sure we're all aware of this, everybody, because sometimes there seems to be some confusion. On February 15th, the responsibility falls on the Board of Education and local to the local Board of Ed to make decisions on our district on whether the kids have to wear masks or not and other issues relating to this. Is that correct?
I know. I'm not sure about that. It's going to either go to the legislature, which I'm starting to meet right now. Or perhaps an executive order, I guess, could always be extended, but I mean, that's-
Oh, no, no. Of course, I misspoke. So if the executive order ends, then I believe then we, we all meet and make the decision ourselves. Is that, is that the way it's going to work?
Well, sure. If the legislature does nothing, the executive, the governor somehow does nothing, and then it just comes to an end. Our policy did say that we would meet within three days.
So the legislators, the, the state representatives and the senators will get together and decide in Hartford whether the governor has the power to control locally our schools, the masks on the kids and things like that. So really, the, the decision is going to be made by the state representatives and the senators, whether they're going to give the, the governor the responsibility or the power, the executive order, to, to control this from Hartford rather than locally. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, and one last point will be in a, if the executive order ends or his powers are no longer continue, then we'll all get together and hash it out, and then we'll wear the responsibility of the decision of the policy going forward for our local district.
That's correct. That's why we, in case that happened, we were smart enough, I hope, to put that in a policy that we'd meet within three days. Am I correct about that?
It's one, it's one week, not three days.
Sorry. I don't know why. Three days, one week. Okay, thank you. Thank you for correcting that. Okay, I've never been told I've been quiet, Mr. Kelly.
I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to clear up everything. That's all. So we know where we, because it is, it could be questionable time going over the next couple of weeks. So I just want to be able to address where we're going to go and how we're going to talk about it. And I encourage all of us to call each other, and I know it's a sensitive topic, but we should start talking about it earlier than later. I know the public meeting is probably, it's not timely to talk about it now, but maybe we certainly have to lay the groundwork for that and start talking about it as it gets closer to February 15th.
Probably. Why don't we go into public comment now before we kind of get off any more track?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, guys, now let's not lose control. Sorry, let's kind of go right into public comment now, and then we can bring up further stuff and committee updates. Okay, so with that, we appreciate everyone coming out. Glad to see so many people here tonight. I know we have many opinions and perspectives. We welcome them all. Let's just please try to keep it civil. With that, I'm going to do my usual where I call you up and then the next person so we could stay on track. First up, Ms. Jacquet-Holmen, please. All right, and after that, it would be Jamie Downs.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and Board of Education members. I'm here tonight to talk about a few new policies, starting with the proposed changes to Policy 9325 on public speaking and engagement that appear intended to limit our free speech. As I understand it, the primary reason for the proposed change is that you don't want to hear about medical freedom from the parents who have come here month after month to plead with you to change blatantly discriminatory COVID policies and to beg you to start following the science instead of blindly adhering to the false belief that a piece of fabric stops an airborne virus. It doesn't. Did you hear England just dropped all the mask and vaccine mandates yesterday? You seem to have adopted another new policy for COVID, one that I don't recall coming to a vote. This is the policy that requires some young children to eat outside in 28-degree weather with 30 mile-an-hour winds. Who made that policy decision? Another new policy of yours was to accept nearly $10 million in tainted funding from the Biden administration for ARPSER III. You previously told parents there were no mask testing or vaccine strings attached to the funding, yet the application submitted by Dr. Jones clearly says you plan to adopt the CDC's policies without question. The public wants to know unequivocally with the views of your legal representation, whether masks, testing, or vaccine strings are in fact tied to the money, because other parent groups have claimed that this is, in fact, the case. And by the way, did you know CDC changed its mask guidance last week? It continues to recommend that you wear the most protective mask you can, you can, that fits well, adding that KN95 masks offer the best protection. So does that mean that you'll be issuing KN95 masks to everyone in the district every day so that you can be in compliance with the SERIII funding requirement that you wrote for yourselves? Will you be deploying staff to ensure the masks are properly fitted according to the strict new guidelines or to ensure that the rules around the mask breaks are properly followed? Where will the funding for the KN95s come from anyway? I mean, it appears that the SERIII funds are fully allocated, albeit to some rather controversial initiatives, including transformative social-emotional learning. What is it about our children that you wish to transform anyway? Their morality? I don't recall ever giving any of you that responsibility to dictate the morality of my own children, yet you do it every single day.
Thirty seconds.
I lost two science classes last month to SEL training. I find it shocking that this money would be used in this, in this way, because it often draws on the ideas of social justice and anti-racism. Before you spend any of the SERIII funding, please confirm the stipulations with your legal team so that we're on the same page. Please consider working with parents instead of against us on medical freedom issues, and please reject the changes to Policy 9325.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Jamie Downs, followed by Cara Philbin. I think that's, is Downs coming down? Yes, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to comment on the proposed changes to Policy 9325, which includes several new restrictions on the public hearing portion of BOE meetings. I was surprised to learn that despite signing an oath to uphold the United States Constitution, several board members are in favor of restricting residents' free speech. What I can't understand is why are you looking to close the lines of communication? What I can't understand is why are you looking to close the lines of communication? If an effective homeschool partnership is the cornerstone of a strong educational system, why would you disenfranchise parents by silencing their voices? Is it not your job to listen to their concerns? Look, I understand it's time-consuming to hear from so many concerned parents, and I bet it wasn't always like this. In years past, you might have heard it from a handful of parents, and I bet the tone of their comments was a bit softer. But things have changed, and there are more concerned parents than ever before. And I can guarantee that attempting to silence them will not work. Perhaps the issue is that we're trying to squeeze too much into one meeting. Perhaps a separate monthly town hall-style meeting would give the board and Greenwich residents the opportunity to engage in dialogue about issues impacting our children. Perhaps that would create an atmosphere of trust and cooperation. What's bothering me is that I haven't seen any proposals offering new venues for discourse. I don't see any online forums, invitations to committee meetings, or surveys. So I'm wondering, what are you doing to better understand the day-to-day experience of the students in this district? How are you measuring the impact of your policies? How do you gauge the public perception of the job you're doing? And if this is not the right venue to engage in these conversations, then what is? If not here, where? If not now, when? You named the time and the place, and I can assure you, parents will show up. That is, if you want to listen. If you want our children to be critical consumers of information who appreciate diverse perspectives, then should we really be talking about limiting free speech and public discourse? Should we really be talking about turning off the mic when someone's viewpoint doesn't align with our own? No, we need to walk the walk. We need to normalize changing our minds when presented with new information and not act as if doing so makes us somehow naive or spineless. It's on us. During my limited interactions with GPS parents, I've heard so many concerns, and my response is always, have you shared this with anyone? Unfortunately, the fear of retribution is-
30 seconds.
So I'm here today for two main reasons. One, to remind parents that the school board is here to serve us and our children. They're intelligent people with good hearts, and they want to hear from you, so speak up. Don't be afraid. And number two, I'd like to ask each of you to recall the oath you took to uphold the Constitution of the United States and reject the proposed changes to Policy 9325. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Cara Philbin. Followed by Carl Higby.
Good evening. I'm speaking for Peter Scher tonight because your new policy prevented him from speaking. The policy proposal to limit public engagement is not in the best interest of the public or the Board of Education. Board members should be opening up communication and feedback with parents, voters, and residents. The proposed policy change is in direct contradiction to Greenwich community expectations, national trends in education, and the BOE's own published strategic plan. For decades, public comments at board meetings provide constructive engagement with the board. All this changed four years ago when a new board chairman tried to change and restrict open communication with the public. Here are five specific best practices you should implement instead. One, publish all BOE meeting documents to the public and the board at the same time. There is no purpose to restrict or hide information the board members see. This means posting everything on the Friday before each meeting. Two, respond to email. If someone bothers to write to the board, members must respond. This means eliminating the dreaded "thank you for your interest" acknowledgement. Instruct the administration to respond to any email within 48 hours. Selectively replying is unacceptable. Four, write explanations for agenda items. This policy item has no explanation or rationale on the cover page as required. Five, remove agenda items that are not ready for discussion. No documents by Friday should automatically reschedule an item to another meeting. You can make your meetings more efficient and effective. Restricting public hearings and parent voice would be the wrong remedy and permanently damage the reputation of the Board of Education. Please rethink this PGC proposal. In my additional time, I'm going to read from a constituent. No to the proposed changes to Policy 9325. So I hear tonight the board is going to vote to censor the public. I hear the board wants to do this because they are tired of listening to the public comments, that they find the public comments too long and the public comments are too repetitive. They want the meeting to be shorter. When I mentioned this to some friends, one friend said, isn't that what they're elected to do? Another said, wow, they could always resign if they find listening to their constituents boring. Another said, if they don't like hearing about the same problems over and over, maybe they can solve the problems. Free speech, freedom of expression, is a fundamental human right. For our Board of Ed to vote to take away this right goes against every fabric of why they were elected. Any board member that votes to censor free speech has lost sight of their duties and has no place on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Philbin. Next up, Carl Higby, followed by Kristin Nyman-Ski.
Yeah, just real quick on the mask thing, I want to point out, the last time we were here, Tony Jones told me that they follow CDC guidance, considering that Walensky just came out and said, hey, these paper and cloth masks are political theater and, quote, useless. So are we doing science here anymore? I guess not. So you guys, I'm trying to be as respectful as possible here, but I thought showing a bunch of seven-year-olds a cartoon erection was like the ultimate low point, but you did it again. And I find out that kids, including my daughter, are outside in 30-degree weather in 37 mile-an-hour winds having lunch. This is like completely intolerable. Again, not voted on here, just arbitrary policy. I reached out to Angela Schmidt, or Schmidt, and she said, well, you know, you know, I'll get with the nurses and we'll talk to the teachers, and she'd like spread the whose fault this is out. And it really bothers me because it's a bureaucratic attempt to absolve yourselves of any actual individual guilt. But there's eight years old. There's a small craft advisory warning on the day that she was eating outside, sitting on the ground. That's a problem to me. It's January in Connecticut. This is not Miami. And when I finally pushed her on it, I know some of you were CC'd on that thing and you responded, and I appreciate that. But she wanted to throw Mr. Hull under the bus. Now, Mr. Hull, I don't know him personally, but he's super favored in my household. He's a really good teacher. He's actually the only teacher that can ever get my daughter to actually like a book. He's not at fault here, because this is happening in schools all across Greenwich. It's a real problem. So I'd ask Dr. Jones, whose fault is this? Who made this call? No response. And this is the problem. There is no mechanism for dialogue at these meetings. I'm just asking a simple question. Who's at fault and who's going to be punished for it? How about we move your desk outside into the courtyard for the rest of the year? I'm good with that. You don't seem too thrilled about it. And you shouldn't be, because it's dumb! Just as dumb as these kids eating outside. That's all I'm asking. They don't have a choice. Teachers have a choice. They can go inside and eat in the warm place without a mask on. They can have professional development without a mask on. My kid's got to have this thing strapped to his face like a diaper all day. They go outside for five seconds, they get yelled at to put it back on during recess. This is outrageous. Let's start having some actual science here governing these things.
30 seconds.
We got to get our kids back inside in January. I mean, does anybody here disagree with that?
No.
So let's actually just move them back inside. February 14th or whatever, Joe, we'll deal with the mask mandate then. But I swear to God, if my kids are eating outside one more day, it's going to be real bad for you guys.
Thank you very much. Next up, Kristin Nyman-Ski, followed by Elizabeth Hopley. Here she comes.
I had high hopes for this somewhat new Board of Education, but unfortunately, it seems that the Board of Ed wants to be even more restrictive with parents' efforts to voice their opinions and concerns. I'm appalled that this is the direction you are going in. If anything, you should be doing the opposite. The Board of Ed should be welcoming of parents' opinions and input since you are making decisions regarding the education of our children. The three-minute limit on public speaking is already restrictive, and I feel it should be increased to four minutes. It's also very disheartening that I hear you're trying to stop parents from speaking about anything not on the Board of Ed's agenda. Since the Board of Ed controls the agenda items, this is an easy way to stifle free speech. The Board of Ed can purposely never put an item on the agenda that they know parents are concerned or frustrated about. This would help them avoid difficult conversations and make it to look to the public like there are no other concerns. The Board of Education exists for the education of our children. Parents should have as much input as possible when it comes to the education of their children. The Board of Ed should be completely transparent and open to more communication with parents, not less. I object to the proposed changes to Policy 9325 and propose that instead of becoming more restrictive, the Board of Ed should add a public speaking meeting or town hall every month where they give parents two to three hours to voice any concerns in a Q&amp;A session. This would show parents in the Greenwich community that you want and welcome their input and criticism, and that you are making a good faith effort to work with parents and not against them. Parents want an excellent education for their children with high standards and a focus on academics and consistency. We do not want social justice and political issues embedded in the curriculum. We also do not want schools making health decisions for our children. You are the Board of Education, not the Board of Health. You do not personally know my child. You do not know my child's or my family's medical history. You do not know how things like masks and push vaccines affect my child. The teachers' union and Board of Ed constantly talk about social emotional learning, yet you do not think twice about the social and emotional damage you are causing with your policies. You're creating stress, anxiety, depression, feelings of isolation, and segregation with your policies. And then you spend funding and steer everything towards social emotional learning to fix the very problems your policies are causing. Children do not want to be treated differently based on race, gender, skin color, vaccination status, or any other divisive measure. You're causing division where there should be none. The only factor schools should be concerned with as to how children are treated is their academic ability and their family's economic status. Some children need more help than others based on those two factors, not based on their race, skin color, gender, or vaccination status. Please leave healthcare decisions to families and their doctors. If special funding is tied to things like masks or vaccines, reject the funding. Funding should be redirected towards academics and away from school-based healthcare clinics and SEL. Go back to focusing on academics, consistency, and transparency.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nyman-Ski. Next up is Elizabeth Hopley, followed by Jackson Stack. Is she online? I don't see her here. Elizabeth Hopley. After that, it's Jackson Stack.
I'm not seeing her online. If she is online-
She's here. She's here. Thank you. Then next up is Jackson Stack.
Hi. So my name's Elizabeth Hopley. I've been a Greenwich resident for 14 years, and my husband and I have three children. I'd like to voice opposition first to the proposed changes to Policy 9325 to limit the free speech of residents. Also, your proposed changes would allow only one person, the board chairperson, to further modify these limitations at each meeting. Do you understand that you're giving your board authority to one person to make decisions for you? I would think especially with new members on this board that there would be interest and curiosity in hearing from the people who give you this authority. That said, please reject these changes, and if anything, expand ways that parents and residents can voice their concerns and make constructive suggestions. There are a lot of very smart people in this room and in this town, and you ignore them, it's only to your detriment. They're here to inform and help you. And inform you, they have, meeting after meeting, warning you of the harm of being inflicted on children due to mask mandates, quarantines, and coercive actions to promote COVID vaccines. A surgical mask is designated by the FDA as a medical device. Vaccination is a medical intervention. Even if you're a licensed medical professional, you can only recommend, not mandate, a medical intervention. You actually have no legal authority to recommend such a practice, nor does any administrator or teacher. This is practicing medicine without a license, which is a crime. Executive orders, health orders, mandates, none are actually laws. Laws are only for our legislature to pass. And no emergency order supersedes established law. Did you know the supremacy clause in the U.S. Constitution states that any time a law contradicts the Constitution, it is actually considered null and void? Did you know that these mask mandates, quarantines, and coercion to vaccinate with an emergency use vaccine violate the Fifth, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution? They are also a violation of the Nuremberg Code of 1947, which requires informed consent of the subject. Did you know that the Emergency Health Powers Act clearly states that the only way a person can be deprived of their rights is through due process, something protected by the Fifth Amendment? Quarantines, masks, vaccines, they cannot be forced. In fact, quarantines and other forced medical interventions can only be enforced with a court order from a judge and with a diagnosis from a medical professional. Even then, one still has a right to a hearing. How confident are you that these orders are legal? Depriving children and parents of their rights is a serious crime, and ignorance of the law is not an excuse. Whether it's tainted SERIII funds that make you continue this or some other force, please, I ask you to step back, have some courage, and remember that you must do what's in the best interest of the children. These abusive COVID mandates must stop now. And the tides are turning. The UK just lifted all their COVID mandates-
Thank you so much, Ms. Hopley. Next up, Jackson Stack, followed by Illet Steinberg. Jackson online?
I'm not seeing a stack online. If they could raise their hand if they're online.
Okay, not seeing that. If he does appear, we can always come back. Next up then, Illet Steinberg, followed by Roger Rosendahl. Do you see Steinberg online?
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening.
Oh, good evening. Thank you.
People who make the effort to sign up and speak at the BOE meetings care about their children and community. If you don't agree with them, and even if you have heard similar issues before, the community has the right to be heard. Please do not make attempts to limit speaking at BOE meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Roger Rosendahl, followed by Frances Novak. Oh, thank you. Here's Roger.
Someone mentioned that we have some very smart people in the room. We've heard from a lot of them. I'm very impressed by the presentations, I have to say. And, you know, Jackie and Jamie were spot on. And a couple of comments by previous speakers that sort of triggered me, my thinking, the Vice President and the student body raised an issue that I think has been overlooked in the COVID analysis, and that is the balancing of physical health with risk and other concerns that you've heard about here tonight, emotional, mental well-being. I don't see that balancing. I've heard governments say it's all about safety, not about freedom. If you infringe freedom, there is a balancing required. I haven't seen it. One of your board members referenced the executive order, and somebody else mentioned that we really need a legislation, an act, that you have executive order, as you see on the federal level, doesn't mean it's the law. That the legislative body is considering authorizing the governor to issue the order, says in itself, he doesn't have the authority until they do it. I have previously spoken against teaching our children to hate the country and themselves as either oppressors or victims. I've also spoken against the teaching of untruth. Had a bumpy, bad history. Slavery was terrible. Genocide was worse, but they're not here, Americans aren't here to complain about it. I've previously spoken about the importance of freedom of choice, including the ability to make the wrong decisions, and I made them myself. I did get backs, by the way, boosted under pressure from my millennial spawn. But they did tell me, it's your choice, and I made it. Tonight, I'd like to drill down on the Board of Education itself and the need for honesty, integrity, credibility, transparency, and accountability. It's a new board. Last October-
30 seconds.
Last October, someone on the board mentioned there's no link between federal funding and any actions to be taken. That was a false statement. It's flat-out a bribe to do what the feds want. It's, you know, a bribe- It's, you know, a bribe to go woke. That statement needs to be corrected.
Time.
Must be corrected.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rosendahl. Next up is Frances Novak, followed by Julie Farinaz.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Frances.
Hi, this is Frances Wu Novak, mom of three kids who thoroughly enjoyed today's day off. To honor and hold space for childhood joy, wonder and adventure as we kick off a new year of Board of Education meetings, please allow me to share the nineteen sixty-two children's classic, The Snowy Day by Ezra Jack Keats. These are our children. One winter morning, Peter woke up and looked out the window. Snow had fallen during the night. It covered everything as far as he could see. After breakfast, he put on his snowsuit and ran outside. The snow was piled up very high along the street to make a path for walking. Crunch, crunch, crunch. His feet sank into the snow. He walked with his toes pointing out like this. He walked with his toes pointing in like that. Then he dragged his feet slowly to make tracks. And he found something sticking out of the snow that made a new track. It was a stick. A stick that was just right for smacking a snow-covered tree. Down fell the snow, plopped on top of Peter's head. He thought it would be fun to join the big boys in their snowball fight, but he knew he wasn't old enough, not yet. So he made a smiling snowman and he made angels. He pretended he was a mountain climber. He climbed up a great, big, tall, heaping mountain of snow and slid all the way down. He picked up a handful of snow and another and still another. He packed it round and firm and put the snowball in his pocket for tomorrow. Then he went into his warm house. He told his mother all about his adventures while she took off his wet socks. And he thought and thought and thought about them. Before he got into bed, he looked into his pocket. His pocket was empty. The snowball wasn't there. He felt very sad. While he slept, he dreamed that the sun had melted away all the snow. But when he woke up, his dream was gone. The snow was still everywhere. New snow was falling. After breakfast, he called to his friend from across the hall and they went out together into the deep, deep snow. These are our kids. Thank you, GPS team, for all you do every day.
Thank you very much, Frances. Next up, Julie Farinaz, followed by Graham Fatida. Sorry if I didn't say that right. I see Julie online. Yep, there you go, Julie. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. First of all, Frances, that was awesome. Anyway. Good evening, Chairman Stowe, Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education, cabinet, PTA and community. My name is Julie Farinaz and I am the executive director of the Greenwich Alliance for Education. The Alliance is the only nonprofit in Greenwich, one hundred percent focused on our public school students, teachers and alumni. Yesterday, I mailed thirty-seven scholarship checks totaling fifty thousand, two hundred dollars to colleges and universities for avid alumni who recently applied to our avid success scholarship program. This brings our annual investment to a hundred and ten thousand and overall since two thousand and thirteen to six hundred and fifty thousand. These students are an impressive bunch and intend many Connecticut state schools and schools out of the area like Emory, URI, Fordham, Rochester Institute of Technology, University of New Hampshire and more. They are majoring in business, neuroscience, psychology, nursing, communications, computer science, and are working jobs while attending school, are in leadership positions on campus and are self advocates. They take Cornell notes and have plans to attend graduate school in the future. They credit their avid teachers, the avid program, the support from their families and their Greenwich Alliance avid success mentors for their accomplishments and academic achievements attained so far. Avid works. The Alliance's mentioned last month is here and help, is here to help with its expansion to, to the elementary schools and encourages the prioritization of designing a true role for the avid district director to focus on the needs of the student population and further address the opportunity gap. Reaching out grants is the Alliance's granting program that awards teachers, program coordinators, administrators, staff and community partners who have innovative ideas to change up the educational experience for all students. To give you an example, one of our current grants is called Unbound Innovations XR and is championed by Gaspar Lapari at Western Middle School. The Alliance's investment of a hundred and fifteen thousand in the technology and software over the last three years has made it possible for Mr. Lapari to teach students from all academic areas to experience
Thirty seconds.
content using virtual reality and augmented reality. This technology and software is the future and we are happy to make this possible. Grant applications are now available on our website and are due on March twenty-fifth. Think big, everyone. Happy twenty twenty-two and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Julie. Always great hearing about the Alliance and all the wonderful things they do. Next up is Graham Fatida, and I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong, right there, followed by Dan Quigley.
Hi, Graham Fatidad, eleven-year Greenwich town resident. My eldest son went through ten years of Greenwich Public Schools. I never once emailed the Board of Ed, nor had much more than parent-teacher interviews with anyone at North Myanis, Eastern Middle School or Greenwich High School. We moved here because of the school system. We were grateful for the educational environment that was provided until COVID. On Tuesday, and all of you know this as I emailed you, my daughter's class was sent outside to eat lunch. It was thirty-three degree weather with a twenty-five mile an hour wind. Real feel, twenty-two degrees Fahrenheit. There was no choice. They were told to go outside. At what point does the risk of these children contracting pneumonia supersede COVID? What about the dangers of falling branches or falling ice? Are we going to be worried about these kids' safety? Last week, her class was told to eat on the floor in the hallway because the cafeteria was too full. These are children. They're not dogs. And to be fair, my dog gets to eat inside. These children are being treated like criminals. The CEA and their nine-point plan, supported by the GEA, seeks to institutionalize a prison mentality in Greenwich schools. Temperature checks at the door to enter the school, symptom checks and N ninety-five muzzles on our children. I implore the board to stand up and say no to these measures. While the principal of the school has responded to my concerns with the option of my daughter eating in the cafeteria, separate from her classmates, what about everybody else that's being sent outside to eat? It's not just my daughter here that doesn't like this. And it's not fair that my daughter now has a choice and all of the other children don't. Further, it's not just North Myanis. My wife walked by Dundee yesterday. It was only forty-two degrees Fahrenheit and kids were eating outside there. The question is why? Why, if the cafeteria is full, can they not eat in their classrooms? And by whose standard is the cafeteria too full? Why should they sit on the floor in the hallway? Why should they have to go outside in winter weather? Is it a misapplication of procedures? Is it COVID fears? There may be no easy answers, but there are simple answers. Have the courage to do what is morally right. Protect our children. If the staff can't deal with COVID fears, replace them. If it's bad procedures, fix them. If you need someone to come in to supervise lunch, put out a request. There's lots of family members around this community that are very happy to come in and help out.
Time. Thank you very much. Next up, Dan Quigley, followed by Susan Diana. Hey, Dan, can you keep your mask on? Sorry, it's a rule we have to school.
Apologies, yes.
No worries.
Dr. Jones, distinguished members of the Board of Education. I wanted to come in person tonight to say a simple thank you for your hard work and dedication and commitment to the children of Greenwich and our community. The last two years have been, have brought with them unprecedented challenges and obstacles for our Greenwich Public Schools. And the road from March twenty nineteen to today hasn't been easy or smooth. But because of your work and the work of our dedicated teachers, educators and administrators in the front lines and in the trenches, we've seen a GPS persevere. It is important to remember that our Board of Education members are all volunteers. They are concerned citizens who spend an inordinate amount of their own time working hard to look out for the best interests of our schools and our children. Although we have seen school boards become increasingly politicized nationally, each of you deserve our thanks and our respect for your service during these particularly unique and difficult times. This is especially true when one considers the very high bar of difficulty with which some of you have had to work through over the past two years. Dr. Jones, as a parent of a GPS student, I'm grateful for your steadfastness in keeping our kids in school. Most of the other superintendents and surrounding areas did not. This has, in my opinion, been the single most important decision made during the pandemic. And its biggest beneficiaries are the children of the Greenwich Public School system. I thank you for that and your hard work. In closing, it isn't easy to make tough decisions in public position. Bearing the brunt of public criticism goes along with the territory. No one decision will please everyone and every single decision will ultimately be questioned. Each of you carry the great burden of the well-being and the education of the children of Greenwich. You all deserve the respect of our community for the job you've done. Thank you for your efforts and your dedication to service.
Thank you very much. Next up, Susan Diana, and she'll be our final speaker unless Jackson Stack has reemerged. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Diana and I'm a proud mother of three young boys, two of which go to North Myanis School. I simply wanted to speak tonight to provide a counterpoint to some of the other views that have been expressed here. My appreciation goes far beyond any other passion that I might have for the school's administration, particularly Angela Schmidt and Kathleen Smith Ramirez and the entire teaching staff. The amount of stress they have been under the last two years cannot be overstated. They have not only had a deadly global pandemic that has killed over eight hundred and fifty thousand people nationwide and counting, but also a collapsed ceiling, subsequently having to find temporary schools for half the school. We, as parents, need to continue to support our schools, support our administrators, teachers and staff. They have kept our children safe under shifting state and national guidelines. We must shift the narrative so that our teachers, our administrators know and feel that they are supported. We must not let the toxicity that is spewed in these meetings permeate our schools. I'm here to represent the majority of Greenwich parents to say thank you to all our teachers who have shown bravery and perseverance throughout the last couple of years, despite the negativity that seems to be constantly thrown around. Thank you for your selfless acts. Thank you for keeping our kids safe. Thank you for everything on behalf of the majority.
Thank you very much. And not seeing Jackson Stack online, we will now end, conclude public comment. Thank you for everyone coming out. Let's now turn to the monthly reports. First up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair. So I also want to start tonight just congratulating all of our student honorees and, and guests on his retirement. It's, that's, that's really why we do what we do is to be able to celebrate our students and sometimes we don't get enough of that in these meetings. I also want to just say congratulations to Eastern Middle School who are opening their musical today, which was, and a special thanks to Dan Watson and his staff for managing to figure out how to get the building open so that could continue tonight. They, that's something that they had missed, obviously, in the height of COVID, so it's very exciting for them. Also, just a reminder that the budget presentation to the BET is on January twenty-fifth. It will be a virtual meeting. As it stood as of yesterday, those who are wanting to make comment, they're not actually doing the comments live. You have to write into the BET, but so that's where it was as of yesterday. Also, just a quick update that I've heard, we have heard quite a bit of conflicting on the daily notes that we send out for each school. Some people really rely on them. Matter of fact, we had about three days or so where we didn't do them at the high school and we really heard, why are you not doing it? Where are they? And then we'll have other emails where parents are like, can I opt out of this? Please stop sending them. Because they're just, they're COVID tired. So tomorrow in the newsletter, there will be an opt-in that parents can opt in. It'll be one note every day that has all of the schools on it. And that way, people that no longer want to receive them won't have to get them. And it'll only be those people who really want it. So thank you to Jonathan and Mary Keller for working on that for us. That will start next Monday. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Kloski.
Sorry. So there's been a couple of comments and a rash of emails regarding, you know, just children in general eating outdoors. And I think it would be nice to have some follow-up, just to be able to respond to some of those concerns with respect to what is the current policy and practice and is that going to change in light of the, you know, just regular or the conversation that we've been having here to suggest that it's not such a good idea.
First of all, those decisions are made every single day all year long at the building level. And obviously, it's guided by if it is above freezing. That's the first and foremost. And if children want to go outside, and generally, when it's above freezing, children do go outside. Parents send them in coats, send them in gloves. If for some reason they didn't have what they needed to be outside, then a teacher wouldn't just take them outside. In regards to lunch, one thing during COVID that actually a lot of our students have enjoyed is they've increased a lot of the outdoor spaces. Now, do we want to take them out if it's thirty degrees? No. And the children were not out in thirty-degree weather. Was it, I think it was around thirty-four, thirty-five, about one-thirty in the afternoon. And that is one of the things that staff did check whenever we heard from the parent. They're inside a courtyard. So it was important to note too, they're not sitting out on an open playground. They're inside a courtyard. You really can't feel the wind. There aren't big tree branches to fall on children. There aren't big icicles to fall on their heads. They were inside. So I say that because really K-12, our kids eat outside. If you go to the high school, you'll see kids sitting out front, you know, all bundled up in their gear when it's pretty chilly. Elementary is much more guided by the teacher, working with the nurses, working with the principal. And they, and you've got to understand too, the teacher is there with them. Our teachers don't want to be outside, you know, if it's really so cold and it's uncomfortable.
Excuse me, this is not a back and forth. Thank you.
So I think it's
Enough. Thank you.
So the, there really is no set policy. It's guidance that you would find across the United States. When I was the elementary principal in nineteen ninety-eight, that's what we did. You look and see what is the windshield, what is the temperature? And you make really good common sense decisions so that children can actually get at some outdoor. Kids like to be outside. So these teachers, and there were several of them, there were several of them that actually ate outside that day and felt that it was very comfortable.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kloski, do you have anything further?
Yeah, I just, so I generally have
Okay, we, we actually, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kloski. Yeah, go ahead, please.
No, I just, I generally have some concerns with, because not every situation will be the same on every given day and nor is every outdoor space the same with respect to corridors. And so I guess there is a concern with going outside because I do realize going outside and getting fresh air, even on cold days is perfectly, is perfectly fine. And if they're going out and they're playing kickball, that's great because, one, they're getting fresh air, they've got their jackets, their hats, their mittens, all that stuff on. They're also creating energy and heat by moving around. And when they're sitting still, eating their lunch, I would think with their gloves off to eat food, it's an entirely different situation. And I know a lot of kids have a fear of speaking up and saying, I'm cold, right? They don't really recognize that. I know I go skiing with my kids and I'm constantly asking them, are your feet cold? Are your hands cold? Because it's just not something that they're readily thinking about until someone actually asks them. And I think there's a difference between sending them out to play versus eating. I'm also in the fact of what the question that hasn't been answered yet is, why can't they just eat in their classroom? I understand that there may be an overload with respect to the gym or the cafeteria where they're eating, but why is the classroom not an option?
It is an option and teachers all across the district eat in the classroom. They, for instance, the building that was referenced tonight, they don't even use their cafeteria for lunch. They use the gym. It's a huge, big space. And there are, it's such, it's one of our, it is our largest building. So you use the gym, you also use the classroom, they're on rotations. It's not the same every single day. They have a schedule, they move around, they can't eat in the room. And a matter of fact, one of the teachers that was referenced, like they generally will sit at their desk if they're inside. You know, they have the shields up. Some teachers will let kids picnic because they want to sit on a towel. You know, they have the shields up. Some teachers will let kids picnic because they want to sit on a towel, which they've done for two years, on a towel, or they may want to sit on their coat because they want to be in a circle on the floor with their friends. So it is, it is classroom-specific, and it depends on the spaces, and it's a daily decision.
Yeah, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I got a bunch of kids, and if any of them were young little kids, like some of the references earlier on, and they came home and described this situation as being uncomfortable and bad, I guess I'd be a little annoyed. So what I'd like to do is, instead of further elaborating on the issue, let's talk about how we're going to solve this problem, because we have to be more sensitive to the kids. Of course, if it's some temperature, I don't know whether it's 55 or 45, or certainly at 75, it's fine to go outside. But let's try to have a discussion where we're sensitive to the complaints we're hearing, and try to figure out how we could make some sort of rules to our, to the number of schools, or suggestions to be more careful about this. Because to Karen's point about the kids, when they're young, they, they, they might not be able to communicate well to a, to a teacher. So as I said, if my kid came home and they were young, and they had a problem like that, you know, I'd want to hear a solution rather than kind of talking about it. I'd like to say, let's kind of get together and figure out what we can do to solve it.
And I'm, I'm happy to have that conversation with the elementary principal team and see. But what I just want to reiterate, when it's above freezing, kids do go outside, and they have forever.
Okay, Michael, oh, sorry, Michael Joseph, you're next, and then Ms. Hirsch.
Yeah, I don't want to, am I on? Okay, I don't want to repeat what Joe said necessarily. I agree with it. I think convening the elementary principals and talking through these things makes sense. They, I think actually it needs to go beyond that a little bit. I think we heard a couple of examples here of, you know, we heard the comment tonight about the importance of balancing COVID safety, and we get that, with all of the other concerns that we're facing, that the kids face at school day. And, you know, quite frankly, it surprised me when, when I heard this week that elementary kids were eating outside. I mean, I'm in schools every day. I, that was news to me. Not, you know, the third, third grader shouldn't be eating outside in 30-degree weather. It just shouldn't happen. It makes, but I think you need, we need to talk through that. But then we also heard, you know, from our high school students very thoughtfully this evening about clubs. And they made a very thoughtful point about if it's safe to have classes with masks on in school, why are clubs virtual? So I think that conversation about that need the balance, it's an ongoing thing. We know that. This is everything, everything has changed in COVID. Every month is different, and we know that. But I think we need to continue to have that conversation at all levels, and see where we can balance, balance out the needs of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch?
I think I'm just going to probably reiterate what Joe and Mike and Karen had said. You know, I, I know I'm not a fan of eating outside when it's 30 degrees. Ask Ms. Costin. We have heat lamps when we eat outside at that weather. And, you know, while this is not a policy, this is something that might be a regulation or something that's deciding, decided building by building. I appreciate that you're going to go back and convene with the, the principals to have this discussion, because, you know, I, I think parents are often surprised when their children come home and mention something. I would also fall back on saying that this might be something that should probably be communicated to parents, saying, you know, if we are having children outside, not just for recess, which makes perfect sense, they need the opportunity to get their ya-yas out and run around. But if they're sitting outside to eat, parents may want to send them with warmer clothing or whatever it might be, or opt them out. So my point simply is, is if there are changes to their daily schedule like that, if they're going to be eating in a different manner, it might be helpful just to communicate that, so parents have an understanding.
Thank you. Ms. Costin?
I guess my next question is, do we not have adequate seating in the alternative spaces where they're eating? So that, I don't understand why they're eating on the floor in a hallway. I mean, I know on pajama day, my kids want to sit on their sleeping bags in the classroom on the floor and eat pizza with their class. But, you know, on the regular, I feel like we should have some proper seating, even if they're in the hallway, like outside, central, outside the gym, there's seats for the children if they can't be accommodated in the gym or the cafeteria. I just feel like we should have proper seating if, in the alternative spaces where they're eating.
Yeah, every building is different, and all of the cafeterias are set up wherever the cafeteria is. Some of them use alternate spaces also for cafeteria, so it just depends on the building. But they do have seating. There are teachers that, again, choose to just eat in the classroom at their desk. It, it's different depending on the size of the classroom. Is it 650 square feet, or is it, you know, an 850-square-foot classroom? And it's, every building is different.
I was going to say, this is, I've, you know, children in three different schools, and all their lunches are completely different in terms of how they're, one's here at Central, one's in elementary, one's in the high school. Of course, we all know the high school's done a few different iterations, given the up and down. So it sounds like something that we should look at. I agree with everyone. I'd like to, oh, sorry, I have another question. Go ahead, Mr. Kittle.
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to add, a different angle on this is, I think what's unique about the situation we heard about tonight is, if this is as common as Tony described it, then maybe that makes it all the more egregious that, that whatever judgment or lack thereof the teacher was exercising resulted in, you know, this sort of feedback. It's not like there's a steady debate over this, and there's people coming here advocating for lunch outside in the winter. And once again, I don't think anyone would advocate for that. So I just, it seems like a particularly poor example of judgment, and the question I wanted to ask is, if that's the case, what, what do you think should be done from an accountability standpoint? Because I think more broadly, when we think about the way this board governs, you always have the choice of saying, well, let's make a blanket rule that affects everybody, or you can say, you know, we're going to trust our teachers and our administrators, but then when they make bad decisions, hold them accountable. And I was just wondering what, how are we approaching this one?
First of all, you have to really figure out what happened. It was not 30 degrees, and there was not a 30-degree wind chill. We have, we have several teachers that actually, on that particular day, chose to eat in the courtyard. And we certainly can go.
Mr. Higby, please.
We can certainly review that, but I think that to say that a teacher's poor judgment when we weren't there, the principal was, the principal could see the courtyard. We will have a discussion. Obviously, this board would like it to be a higher temperature than that. It's not something they do every day, but they do try to get kids outside when they can. And on that particular day, they felt like it was okay. So I don't think that we sit in a place to be able to judge when we were not there. And there are several adults that do a wonderful job taking care of our children, including the principal.
It sounds like something, okay, go ahead, Mr. Kittle.
Sorry, I just, maybe it sounds like we don't agree on the quality of the judgment. What could we do to figure that out? Is this something where we could talk to the other parents in the class? And because, because what I'm interested in is, there's a chance that this was bad judgment from the teacher. And so what, what mechanisms do we have in place to hold someone accountable when they make bad choices that, to the detriment of the student? Assuming that's the case, and then the other question would be, how would we get to the bottom of this? Because this seems like something worth further evaluating.
We, I work with the principal. First of all, it's at a management level and how a building is managed. The principal does, she has received emails from other parents who have heard about this that don't agree with the viewpoint that was presented tonight. So, I mean, that, we do talk to parents, and she's very, very good about that in her building. You know, as far as accountability, if there's something that was really egregious that happened, but that was not how this was perceived from the teachers, again, it's not just one teacher. There are a couple that day that actually made the choice to eat outside in a courtyard that is surrounded by the building. And they felt like it was okay, but we will review it, and we'll follow up.
Sounds like that's a good plan. Just so you know, when I was, I got a text from a BET member that we have to correct one thing that you said, Dr. Jones, let me get it up before I get it wrong. And that was, live comments are allowed at the BET budget meeting. Just have to use the raise the hand function, because they cannot come in person.
We will be sure and put that out, because we did reach out and check on that, and that was not what we were, what was shared. And it was not what was posted online, so we will work together to make sure our parents know.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you.
Yeah, because I got that same note.
Yes, Mr. Kittle.
One more comment, we just need a follow-up, but I'm slightly troubled by the idea that the way we evaluate whether someone did something wrong is asking that person if they feel like they did something wrong. So I just, something for all of us to reflect on is, it is a challenge, but how do we come up with ways to determine when something doesn't feel right? If it actually wasn't right, when the folks who we first go to are often the ones implicated. Even the principal has an interest in, you know, defending the actions regardless of the merit. Yeah, I don't need a response. I just wanted to share that for the board.
Okay, I wanted to, sorry, I have a question. Okay, Ms. Downey, I'm sorry, I'm switching topics.
I was, yeah, I didn't know you were going to other committees.
No, I was going to midterms. I still see Javi here and Sean, right? And I know I have many, many constituents of my own, but also many parents and children that I'm hearing from. What are we, how are people generally responding to the midterms? I know we can't do anything about it now, but these two guys really echoed something that I'm hearing a lot about, which is, we're rushing through the material. Of course, there was a snow day. We've had a lot of kids in quarantines, teachers in quarantines. Subs are teaching new material that are going to be placed on the midterm, and this is certainly adding to the stress level of many of these students. There's probably not much sadly we can do about at this point. It seems like they're starting on Tuesday. But I do really think that this is something we should be talking about, and the administration should be focused on, because I, I see the stress levels of these students going up, and it's not okay.
Yeah, I mean, all I can say is, from my level, I've only heard probably from one or two people. So I don't want to put Ralph on the spot, but he may be hearing, you know, more than I am. I do know they were trying, they tried to be very thoughtful to bring a plan forward that would meet the needs of different students. Some students are on the cusp of increasing their grades, so not having a midterm, or not having that waiting option was concerning to them. We had other students who had been out with quarantines, and they had makeup work, and we're supposed to be working with those students. And again, if you want to ask Ralph to chime in, he may be hearing more than, than I am.
Sure. Ms. Downey, did you have something further on that?
Yeah, actually, I, I actually think they came up with a great solution, because I think it's been a couple of years that these kids need to know, know how to take a midterm. We're doing them a disservice if we just eliminate them again. So by finding a compromise about the weight of it, I think was a really effective solution. But just on the topic of midterms generally, given that my kids are a lot older than, I think, a lot of the other board members in the room, the issue of midterms has come up repeatedly over the years, how we administer them, the notion of how they're done, these, the process of midterms. So this is not a new topic. It's just a little variation on it this year, and perhaps, thinking of it for next year, the administration at the high school could start talking about, okay, if this is, if it keeps coming back every couple of years as a, why do we do midterms? Why do we do them this way? Really, not really, why do we do them, but why do we do them this way? I think as an educational matter, it would behoove us to, to take a deeper dive, for them to look at it, the professional educators, because it, it has come up, as I said, my kids are older, and it was coming up five, 10 years ago. So this is not a new topic, guys. So it won't solve this year. But I think on a going-forward basis, we can examine them generally.
Absolutely. Okay, Ms. Hirsch?
I did want to echo some of the things that I heard in XCOM and from our student leaders that were here today. Yes, it's exceptionally important for our children to be able to take midterms and understand the rigors and how to take tests like this. My college student had come home and said, if my daughter doesn't learn how to take a midterm, she's in trouble when she gets to college. But at the same time, I am hearing from a lot of students, much like our student leaders, that said that teachers are trying to rush to get into material taught that's going to be on midterms, that I'm hearing from students that some sections of classes are two or three units behind, and some are, you know, and so midterms are going to be different for every student. And I think that that's sort of a very difficult and added stressful way for our students to kind of go into this with the fact that we've not had a full week of school. And I really urge you and the administration of the high school to take a look at this. And if there, you know, some classes that are three or four units behind, then that is where that information should stop. Because, you know, when children are waking up to a snow day and panicked because their teacher's desperately trying to get through a unit that they know is going to be on a test next week, it is very stressful for them. The anxiety these kids are feeling, just in general, is through the roof, and we've got to do something to support that.
Do something. Go ahead, Cody.
I wanted to just advocate for perhaps a different approach, which is, I think the, the information available to teachers at the high school is they're closest to the situation. I'd be very reluctant to do some sort of blanket midterm policy coming from the board, unless it was related to, you know, a broader change in our philosophy, you know, supported by academic research or something. But the idea that a handful of students feel stressed, which is probably not a new phenomenon for high school students, means that we should have some kind of blankets reaction. I would, you know, I feel like this is something that maybe we want to keep our hands more off of than on.
I was just suggesting, Cody, that the administration of the high school do it, not us.
Oh, yeah, sure.
By the way, the policy did come specifically from the administration, not from us.
Definitely not in our purview.
Yeah, I.
Ms. Kloski?
I was just going to say, I agree with, with Cody on this. Yeah, I think that the implementing the midterms and putting them back in is, is a good thing. And I agree that there are probably stresses in the fact that it has been gone for two years, and now all of a sudden comes back is an added stress. And I am, I do think the administration probably, and the, and Ralph, and the teachers have the pulse of their students. I hope so. That's their job, and understand and can appreciate and get them through this. I think these are all about life lessons for kids and important aspects that they need to learn to deal with, which is taking tests, being under stress, trying to figure things out. Look, do I worry about overstressing kids? Of course. And there is, there's a line, and it's a fine line, and it's hard to navigate that line. But at some point, we have to let the process work, and I believe, and I have to trust in the administration and Mr. Mayo and the teachers, understand and appreciate, because I know that they all, all those teachers extend themselves out and are readily available to the students for those that have questions. And I, you know, implore, employ the students to go, go see their teachers. If they have a question, go ask it. Make sure you're prepared in the best way possible, because life is going to throw curveballs every, every day of the week, and you got to know how to deal with them. And these are the ways to learn how to deal with it now, when the consequences are less severe.
Thank you. And I was going to echo Ms. Downey, that you were right to do it, that I think it was, the administration did a nice job of trying to find a balance by doing sort of the greater of, hopefully making, you know, improving your grade, not bringing it down. So with that, can we move on to committee updates? And I'm just going to go, sorry, yep. Can I go in order, or, go ahead, Mr. Kelly, or no?
Mine's quick. Actually, as, as we sit here, Planning and Zoning is going to vote on the high school entryway design tonight. So hopefully, we'll have an email, a happy email to all the rest of the board tomorrow, and we have a building committee meeting at 8:00 AM. So let's not go too late.
Well, we're, so far, we're sticking to our agenda and timing. Okay, Mr. Kelly?
I have to apologize in advance. I've got a lengthy report, so bear with me, please.
See, I cursed myself by saying we were on task. Okay, go ahead.
I'll move quick. Cardinal Stadium. We, there was an issue with the state DOT, which we talked about last meeting, and we have solved that problem, so we are in a good position to get our permanent TCO, which in itself sounds a little strange, because the permanent temporary certificate of occupancy sounds strange. But it's the step before we actually get our C-VO. So it's good news. The next is sort of a different topic. It's making some good out of a tragedy. We, about a year ago, we lost, passed away, our, one of our boys, lacrosse coaches, and Chris Andrea, and his wife Jamie, after he passed, had set up the opportunity to donate money to what he had such a passion for, which was sports, especially lacrosse at Greenwich High School. So the, the goal for Jamie, his wife, was to raise as much money as she could for Cardinal Stadium. Now, as we all know, Cardinal Stadium was funded by public funding, and, and basically, we didn't take any private funding. So in multiple conversations with Jamie, we tried to understand some of Chris's passions. Broadcasting was one of his passions. So Jamie wants to donate a pretty fair sum of money to help us create a classroom-type broadcast setup for our kids. Ralph Mayo's son, Sean, had started the broadcast club some years ago, and we're. And we're allocating one of the seven press boxes to have a permanent classroom for, uh, for the kids to use to learn the craft and skill of broadcasting. So, uh, the, uh, Jamie, uh, hi- his wife and, uh, and Sean will be meeting to discuss the equipment they're gonna order, uh, which she's gonna donate. Uh, we will then follow through with the amount of the donation and hopefully the board will approve that donation. So that's another one of the Cardinal Stadium related projects we're working on. Uh, next is the emergency road, uh, also phase two called. I don't know if we've officially changed the name, but I like to call it the emergency road or impact. We, uh, we had a Zoom meeting early in the month with all the principals in the town, uh, all the agencies, all the groups, anyone who have anything to do with the, uh, the stadium, uh, with, uh, sorry, with the emergency road. We've, uh, went over an alternative plan, uh, which we put in, we worked on and designed, which we had to do anyway. Uh, so we can't blame it all on the, uh, on, uh, on Greg, our tree warden, uh, Kramer. But, uh, but we did the alternative plan anyway because the town wanted us to put an alternative plan together anyway. We went over the, the alternative plan with the various agencies in town. And, uh, our professionals have suggested that we stick with the original plan we had. So there'll be a very little change, uh, from the original plan we approved, uh, two years ago. Some of the, uh, little change is that, uh, that Jim Michael, our chief engineer, DPW, suggested it would make a lot more sense for the buses when dropping off students to Greenwich Cardinal Stadium, that they enter on the route one side rather than come through the parking lot at the school. That gives the buses the opportunity to park in the parking lot and they can simply drive around and drive in the route one, right turn in, right turn out, rather than coming in through the parking lot and going out the right turn, having to go all the way to the center of Greenwich to then turn back around to come around. Because most buses will be going on I-95 and heading north for, uh, most of Connecticut competitions. So that's the only change, which is not a significant one, but that's the only difference from the, uh, from what we approved. So therefore, I, I don't believe we need to re-vote on that. And we do have what could be, or what we will have to call ed specs. And at this point, I think we have to, uh, uh, submit that to, uh, the, uh, the selectmen, uh, committee, uh, for a, uh, for a building committee. So I think that's where we are with that. Three waterfall project. Uh, we, I'd mentioned how this is progressing. Uh, we got a lot of support from our local public officials. I was told there were some issues with the waterfall project, uh, that were state related and some local. So, uh, we got support from our Senator Ryan Fazio, Steve Meskis has showed tremendous support. Fred Camilla, our first selectman, said he's a 100% behind this. Our select men, uh, or select people, Lauren Raven and Janet McGuigan also said that they're 100% behind this project. I trust the, uh, my fellow Board of Ed members will also support this project. The BET, because it's not funded, uh, by public funding, it's private funded. I think that they, uh, they will also be very happy about that. Uh, the first part of this project will be cleaning up what is an abandoned lot. It almost seems like when you first drive into Hillside and you look over and see that, that garbage and debris and clutter over there. So first step would be, we have a, uh, we've got a topo donated to us from, uh, from Tony DeAngelo, uh, DeAndrea, who's, uh, given us, uh, the, uh, uh, the surveys. Uh, we have a landscape designer who's working with us for free. We have a, uh, a, a person who's donating dumpsters. Our first selectman said he waived dumping fees and I believe we can get the students at Greenwich High School. Certainly the teams will get together to, uh, uh, to help do the phase one, which is clean up the mess that is there right now. And then after that, we'll discuss landscape design and authorization. Now, I understand, uh, Tony, you got a call from somebody in town who said we might have some challenges with this. Is that correct?
Basically, almost all of the town departments have reached out about concerns about this project.
If you, if you could, those ones that actually reached out, could you call them back? And I got authorization from the names of public officials, uh, that I just listed. I'll give you that list again, that you can mention all their names when the town employees, uh, say that they, uh, uh, they're not in favor of this project. And each of these people that I just mentioned said that I can use their name and then direct them to those elected officials of both, uh, the state delegation and our local officials. So maybe they'll change their tune to, we can't do anything to maybe tell us what we can do. And then maybe they can tell us what we have to be cautious about. But at least they can understand that we have the support of all the elected officials, both at the state and locally.
I, I can certainly do that. I think probably a pre-meeting, uh, to figure out what the challenges are would probably be better. Because most of the state delegation don't actually understand what happens with the depth of knowledge. Somebody like Amy, who's head of, you know, Public Works, has on the soil issues, uh, what sort of testing, what we're, what we may run into. There is something to do, and I don't know if it's with deep or EPA or both, uh, where initially when that waterfall was put in, they had to have certain types of plants. It has to do with the water runoff. So there was something that was submitted at the state level. So I think they would have to do some research and it, it's really getting probably a big meeting of everybody to kind of do some research to figure out what are, what are the requirements on the property and what are, what, what we can and can't do.
Okay, I get that. And to me, some view those as challenges. I view those as opportunities. So let's go into and move, try to move forward on it, use the strength and power we have at a, on a project that I think everybody's behind. So, uh, instead of people telling us no, I don't like when people tell us no when an obvious project makes sense to do. So, uh, uh, so I think we're gonna rally the troops on this and try to fix that mess. So that's my take on that. I'm done at that point. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Yes, Ms. Hirsch.
Well, before I get to my, uh, committee updates, I had a quick question for Mr. Kelly, um, with this fantastic waterfall project. I don't know if there's stuff that's being donated, if it's considered, you know, in kind donation. But I assume much like when we have gifts that are given to us, we just need to, I don't know if it's something and I'm gonna ask otherwise, if they need approval by us. Because if it's over a certain funding, uh, so even if it's a don't, being donated, it might be a gift in kind. And I don't know, I mean, we can refer that to policy, but I don't know if that's something that we would need to just approve. I'd love to be able to give recognition to those who've been so kind to step forward, uh, i- if this project can go forward and so forth.
Yeah. Okay. I guess, sorry. Um, okay, Ms. Costin.
Is the, is the gift threshold the same for the Board of Ed as the town? Five thousand?
Yes, I believe that's right. Yeah, five. Mr. Kittle.
Uh, this just reminded me that I think at some point we should revisit the gift policies for schools. Wanted to raise that. I think those comments just remind me that I think it's a relevant subject to look at.
Go ahead, Ms. Downey.
Can I just ask, okay, examine the gift policy, but to what? I, that's pretty broad. You know, with, with what in mind?
Yeah, that it might be overly restrictive currently, the idea that we miss out on opportunities to take funding from people that would benefit uh, schools, students, et cetera, because of onerous restrictions.
We, we can still accept the gifts. They just have to go through an approval process. So it's not anything that is more difficult for them. It's just working through our processes at, with the towns limitations.
God bless you. Yes, but I understand. I, Mr. Kittle, I know what you're talking about. We've talked about, talking, having that come up in policy as it relates to larger donations or fundraising and things like that. And, um, I know we discussed it a little bit when I was on the policy committee, but it's something that we should also consider referring back to the policy committee again. Yes, Mr. Kelly.
I agree, uh, Cody, to, uh, to address that one. I know that I've personally had some interaction with people who were interested in donating some, uh, uh, something to the school. And, uh, it's, it's not abnormal to slide a bunch of documents in front of them, asking them to fill it out and have a tripocut signed and notarized and all that sort of stuff prior to them to actually making their donation. I, of course, exaggerate, but basically that's kind of what we want to get past and make it easier for somebody to give our schools, uh, money and accept donations. So I think, I think readdressing that policy would be fantastic. Thanks for bringing that up, Cody. I do appreciate it.
Very good. Uh, gonna keep going here on the officer reports. Sorry, Ms. Hirsch.
I just wanted to say, CAC met this, uh, month. And, um, they've had a, a slight change in chairmanship. I wanted to thank Dawn Zimmerman, who is the chair thus far this year, as she is stepping down for her time and dedication. Uh, and welcome back Carolyn Lamrum, who has voted back in as chair, and Naomi Nova, Naomi Nova, who has voted in as the vice chair. There was a quick update on some, and discussion on some of the audit, um, updates from Dr. Higenthaler. And I also wanted to note that Jenny Reynolds, who is heading up the enrichment committee, um, is, has suggested a list of topics for parent forums and, and meetings and is certainly open and welcome to new ideas as they are starting to look to put together, um, you know, different param, parent forums and workshops and so forth going forward. Also got an update on the professional development that is happening, uh, based on the changes for IEPs from the state of Connecticut, uh, which will not be going live, I believe, until July 1st. But, um, our staff is all being trained in the new IEP procedures and documentation. And we got an update on that. So I'd like, I just wanted to share that. And, um, the textbook math committee has been unfortunately stymied with several snow days because we have been unlucky enough to have presentations on all of those snow days. So we are, uh, they keep getting moved. So I'll have an update after we have another, uh, another presentation.
That's good. Michael Joseph.
They, um, very exciting, the, our strategic plan committee, uh, met for the first time, um, yesterday. As, um, as you all know, um, our strategic plan, uh, expired or was, was scheduled, it was 2015 to 2020. So, um, we needed to get moving on revision of the strategic plan. What we're, what we're hoping to do, or what we will be doing is we'll be bringing to the board, um, at our board retreat, um, in the first week of February. Well, it's with agenda items, so we can talk a little more, more fully about the, um, the direction that we're hoping to, to, to go as far as how best to revise the strategic plan. Uh, we're not looking at replacing the strategic plan. I think there's consensus, there's consensus on the committee that there's, um, Dakota Cowan, there, there's some good bones there. We have a thoughtful vision of the graduate. We have a lot of thoughtful ideas there. The, um, the idea is how can we, over the next, over the course of the winter and spring, um, working with the community and working with our administrators and teachers and, and people throughout the system? How, how, how can we, um, strengthen and rehone and focus strategic plan such that it aligns with a lot of what you just heard from PTAC tonight, actually? Where you have this concept of a stretch goal, this big goal or big one or two or three big goals over the course of five years that we're working towards. And then in between, every year you have SMART goals, specific measurable, time-bound, realistic, rooted in, um, quantifiable, student, um, data, um, student, uh, student achievement data, um, so that we can measure progress towards the, the, the stretch goal. So that's a, that's a, that's a very brief overview. Like I said, the whole idea is that we're going to be talking about the, how, how the draft timeline to get the full board's in, input on a draft timeline of that, um, at our retreat next month.
Sounds great. All right. Seeing nothing else. Let's move into our meeting. And we were going a little bit out of order tonight because we're moving an action item, as you could see, it's different than usual. As I believe, Ms. Downey, we have, uh, council joining us. Um, so why don't we, could you put this on the table?
Yes, I guess I have to, I'd like to make a motion that the board adopt policies four zero 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 point one and five one four five point four four as presented.
Um, I'm happy to second that.
So the board may recall, these were given to us as a first read in November when we had, um, a number of new board members. So we've put them on hold till tonight. Um, so we've already had a first read and they're on for action this evening. Both of these policies relate to Title IX, um, which I think everyone's familiar with. It came about because PGC, in the process of kind of reviewing various policies and procedures as we've moved over to the CAE model and looked at, uh, they had a list of required and recommended policies. And we decided obviously to start with the required. And the PGC realized we really did not have these Title IX policies in any proper form in, in place, and they are required under various laws. So we brought, this is why we brought them forward. We, these are policies that were drafted by our outside council. They have not been altered in any shape or form in terms of the language, other than putting in names and contact information. So, um, we've had a great fidelity and we trust in our expert, um, counsel at shipment in Goodwin. Andrea Belik, Andy Belik, who is available with us on Zoom this evening to answer any questions. But, um, four thousand point one relates to staff and five one four five point four four relates to students. So ultimately we can move them as separate items if board members want, but I wanted to give, I would think it's helpful if Andy gives, if, if people would like, uh, present a short just explanation about why these policies are required. So can we elevate, is, is she elevated onto Zoom?
She is. She just has to come off from you. Thank you.
Hi. Nice to be with you all. Um, yeah, I'll be very brief. Title IX, uh, of the education amendments of 1972, uh, requires, um, uh, public schools, boards of education to, um, adopt policies, uh, of non-discrimination on the basis of sex. And this applies both to staff and to students. And, um, so what you have before you and, and, um, in the past year, uh, the Title IX, um, regulations have been changed and those have been promulgated. And so, uh, there is a need to, um, uh, update also to ensure that you're compliant with, um, uh, the law and including those regulations. So the, um, policies that have been given to you are, uh, just that. They are, um, they are a codification in essence at the local level uh, of the requirements of federal, um, and as well as there's, um, uh, state law referenced as well, the, um, non-discrimination, uh, statute in Connecticut of 1015C. Uh, but they're really just the codification of legal requirements, uh, on the, um, board of education and on the, uh, school system, uh, relative to non-discrimination.
Ms. Kowski.
Sure, thanks. So I don't really have a, a question, Andy, and I appreciate the fact that you and I have had conversations and you were kind enough to send me, um, some additional reading materials. And I have voiced my concerns with several of you on this, on the board with respect to this particular policy. And I'm relating to the policy regarding students. I have no problem with not committing sexual discrimination. I don't think anyone on this panel does have a problem with not committing sexual discrimination. My problem with this particular policy is the fact that it not only protects against, it, it goes beyond what Title IX was identified and, and why it was created, how 40 years, well, probably more than that, 60 years ago. And my problem here is that this reads so broad as to allow for students that are born biological, we'll go, we'll just for example purposes, students that are born biological male and transitioning and playing on girls' sports teams. So as a woman, and as a woman who played sports her entire life and still pretends to play sports at my age, and a mother of three daughters, all of which who play sports, I have problems with this. I understand that it is that Connecticut passed a law regarding this. I also understand that there were two young women in, who competed in, uh, high school sports. And I believe track or cross, cross country, uh, were denied the, the ability to, uh, win championships and denied scholarships because they were competing against boys, biological men, males who were, um, transitioning to females. There are no rules or guidance provided by CAC or the state of Connecticut that governs how this works. And this doesn't protect, Title IX was intended to protect women, and this doesn't protect young girls. It gives the opportunity for young girls in sports to lose out on opportunities that they would otherwise have been afforded. And it gives, and it also denies them the opportunity. And it gives, and it also denies them the opportunity to win and achieve college scholarships. We've seen this in the press quite some time. We're experiencing it now. With respect to the N C double A swimmers. And today in and of itself, the N C double A has come back and said it needs to have a policy. It needs to have a program. It needs to have more rules governing this because women are being sidelined. We have fought for so long to be treated as equals and now all of a sudden we're not. And I'm not going to stand for it. I don't care if it's Connecticut law. But somebody has to stand up for the young women who fought, who have, who deserve to be protected. The state of Connecticut doesn't provide any guidance with respect to the way the Olympics committee has done this. And now the way the N C double A is doing this. And I do not think in good conscience, we can go forward with a policy That allows for biological boys to compete on female athletic teams who are biologically stronger. Bigger, faster. Until there are some other guidance. And so from that point on, I do cannot, unless there is a carve out that can be provided That protects young women in, in sports. I cannot get behind this.
Mr. Kelly.
While I have experience in sports. I have, I realize I've been gifted with a voice. And I have spent a large portion of my life representing the underrepresented. And, uh, in, uh, in using this big voice. So I'm sympathetic to the underrepresented. But I have to agree with Karen on this topic, having the experience in a, I understand I'm being told. Look into it further and maybe further advice from, from our attorney on this topic. It, it's a law, but I, I can't agree with it. I, I think it's, I have three daughters. I spoke to my wife about this prior to coming here, who she is an athlete. She still competes competitively in sports at, at her age now. And she was so passionate against this topic. And I have always thought it was unfair. So I, I, I feel compelled to voice my opinion on this topic and agree with Karen. And as I said, I, I, I make it a very important part of my life to be, use my loud voice to the underrepresented. And I understand this group is underrepresented, but I, I just don't think it's, it's safe and, and fair. So that's my opinion.
Ms. Downey.
Believe me, I, I share the concerns of Karen and Joe a hundred percent, but this policy Goes, is way beyond what we're talking about. It also is sexual harassment. It, it, it's It addresses a number of different things. It's not purely an athletic policy. So I just want to be clear for people who haven't read it, you know, other than the eight of us. We're talking about a very general broad policy which happens Because of the way it's drafted to include the concern that Ms. Kowalski has. Now I'd like to go back to counsel and just talk about, because we did talk about trying to find a way to craft this In a way to satisfy these concerns. But we weren't able to do so. So I don't know if you can address that and, and the implication of not having a policy like this in place, please, Andy.
Sure. So I, I do want to address just a, a few things. First, you know, the board acts as an entity when it adopts a policy. It is not a statement of the values of individual members, the beliefs of individual members. It is a, really a reflection of a requirement to adopt a policy that is consistent With the current law. And, and to clarify what the current law is. The Title Nine is interpreted and enforced by the United States Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights. They issued a notice of interpretation in June of twenty twenty one that made clear Their position that the non discrimination provisions include transgender students. There was a lawsuit filed prior to that notice of interpretation. There was a lawsuit filed in the state of Connecticut in the district court, the federal district court. And that lawsuit was dismissed. It was a challenge by student athletes against the C I A C rules that permit Transgender athletic participation. Those are eligibility rules of the C I A C, which is your governing body for interscholastic sports. And that lawsuit was dismissed. And although it is currently on appeal by those plaintiffs. There has been no change in the law here in the state of Connecticut. In addition to Title Nine, you have two state laws that protect individuals, including students. From discrimination on the basis of gendered identity and expression. And the State Department of Ed and the Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities Have referenced the C I A C requirements in connection with that. And, and so, you know, I What I can say is that boards of education in the state are, they implement the educational interests of the state. They are an agent of the state. They are required to adopt policies, rules basically that govern their operation of schools. And one of the, most of the policies, to your point, most of the policies you adopt are required. This is one of them. And it certainly is both a requirement of state law that you enact policies, the rules in compliance With the law, but it is also a requirement of Title Nine. That you enact a policy that is compliant with Title Nine. And so I, at this point. The United States Department of Education has made clear in its notice of interpretation That this protects, Title Nine protects transgender students. What I can say is that, you know, your policies can be updated if there is a, if there is a change to the law. Policies are updated all the time. But to not have a policy could be problematic legally. Either with the state or federal authorities, including the United States Department of Education, the State Board of Education, The Office of Civil Rights of the United States Department of Education. And there certainly have been times that The Office of Civil Rights also engages The Department of Justice if it has concerns about enforcement. So I do just, you know, there are, this is, this is a legal requirement On the board from the Title Nine regulations, you must have a policy in place. The policy has to be compliant with the law as it stands today. And both state and federal law require the Board of Education to adopt policies that are Reflective of the law. Again, it's not a, the policies are not a statement of the values of individual board members. Or really the values of the board itself. These are required policies that reflect essentially a codification of federal and state law at the local level.
Andy, I just have a quick question. We have a policy in place that says that this board is required to follow the laws Of the state of Connecticut. So why isn't that sufficient enough? Give, and rather than having to go into this specific detail.
Because the federal law for Title Nine, the regulation requires the adoption of a Title Nine policy.
Where, can you send that to me?
Sure. CFR, section one oh six point A subsection B.
I just put a pen in my hand.
Sure, sorry. Thirty four CFR, section one oh six point eight. B, little b in parentheses.
So Andy, quick question here. Said simply, since I'm not a lawyer, we basically have no choice but to adopt this policy as it is. Is that fair? If I want to.
Requires that you have a policy in place and that it is disseminated To employees and students. So you do that through a variety of means. And so you have to have a policy in place. And the United States Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, as well as State Department of Education. Have authority in connection with any non compliance.
So, okay, so my personal view is of no matter. Is that fair?
Well, so here's what I'll say. I don't, I don't want to say anybody's personal views are of no matter. I, Board of Ed members never give up their right to free speech. But the board as a whole acts as an entity. And that isn't necessarily a reflection of any one member's personal beliefs. In this, in this matter, the Board of Education as an entity must adopt a policy that's in compliance with the law. And again, you know, it isn't that these policies, Whether it's this policy or it's a policy that you're required to have on the administration of medication in the schools or a policy. You know, any number of the policies that you're required to have. They really simply are at a very local level, right? A reflection of the laws you are required to comply with and enforce.
Mr. Kelly.
I'm just a little bit confused. Sorry. Maybe I'm not keeping up. So we're having a vote normally. They told me this when I first joined the board. You get a vote of yes, a vote of no, and you could abstain from voting. So what you're saying here is we can only vote yes, and we don't have those other two choices right now?
I, I'm not saying what individual board members can do. I'm saying the entity must adopt a policy that is in compliance with the law. And I'm saying that a vote of, that the, that the Board of Ed policy is not a statement of its individual members. It is a policy of the Board of Education. So I hope I clarified that.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Hirsch. I'm sorry, Michael Joseph.
So, so Just out of curiosity, so what would happen if we, like, what kind of jeopardy are we in if we don't? Like, what, what happens if we, if we, if we adopt a policy that is, that is, that is not in compliance with the law? The, you know, we take the principled stand here, we put a line in or we amend it in a certain way. That obviously doesn't necessarily, we know doesn't agree with the law. What, what, what are the consequences of that?
So I think the, I spoke earlier about the Board of Education being responsible for Implementing the educational interests of the state of Connecticut in that regard as essentially a state agency. There are procedures in which the State Board of Education could Determine that the board is not meeting its statutory obligations under ten. There's a complaint procedure under ten four B and the State Board of Education could take action Against the, the Board of Education. In addition, the United States Department of Education through the Office of Civil Rights and/or the United States Department of Justice. Could take enforcement action in connection with non compliance with Title Nine. There's also the possibility of, because you receive federal funds, there could be implications for your federal funding. And there's also the possibility of individual claims relative to non compliance.
Mr. Kittle. All right, sorry, Ms. Hirsch.
You know, I had spoken with Karen, Ms. Kowalski, and I, and I understand the concern. It's a very sticky wicket. It is something that is currently in the court system here. You know, but reading over this policy as many times as I had, it is, it is not specifically outlined here. It is very much a policy specifically speaking against sexual harassment and discrimination, Which goes to a much broader and wider Discussion so that our students and our staff walk through the doors of our schools And feel part of a community. They don't feel discriminated against for a multitude of different things. You know, I'm a big fan of being in compliance with the law. But, you know, I, I understand the concerns and I, and I do see that this is, this is a much wider discussion And broader discussion that is something that is not just taking place at this local board. It is certainly seated in higher powers such as the state board of, you know, this is state legal system and beyond. But, you know, again, I, I think not having something like this in place harms far more students and staff. Than having this in place for a very small, not small. An issue that is, is rare and does not, is not commonplace on a daily basis. In that regards, whereas sexual harassment and, and discrimination happens on a, on a far more broad basis daily. You know, that, that's just my, my ten cent.
Mr. Kittle.
Yeah, before I say what I was going to say, just a clarifying comment based on what Karen just said. Is, is it the case that if we don't pass this policy, sexual harassment is allowed or permitted? There's no protections that strikes me as a bizarre interpretation.
Andy, could you answer that?
Sure. So you're required under the regulation promulgated by the federal Government, you are required to have this policy in place so that the procedures can be adopted And used to address, investigate and resolve complaints of, of sex discrimination or sexual harassment. So I, I, I don't know that I can Say that the absence of a policy is saying that yes, sexual harassment is allowed. I don't think that's the case. However, the, the Board of Education is required under the federal law to adopt a policy That is in compliance with Title Nine. So you have to have a policy That prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex under Title Nine. In place. And then you have to have procedures related to that. And those are promulgated by the administration as set forth in the policy. But you have to have the policy in place.
Yeah, that, I think that was the question I had. I guess maybe I can phrase it differently to something that will answer itself. I don't think any of us believe that if there was a case of sexual harassment today in one of the schools that we would not be able to address it. What I was going to say originally is, uh, I would encourage my fellow board members to reflect on the importance of federalism In separation of powers as a founding principle for how our government is set up. And that, you know, compliance with the law can mean different things and that the law is constantly evolving And being reinterpreted both by judges and through legislative processes. I think if we see something that we think is morally wrong, we can play a role in correcting it By standing up against it and letting these processes, you know, work their way through the system. I don't think we're doing much, I don't think we're doing any harm. We're just allowing for something like that to play out. And if down the road we say, you know, this is costing too much with lawyers or causing other issues, we can reevaluate it. But I think that our system is designed for different governing bodies to object To one another and to not get steamrolled when especially over, you know, moral issues.
Could I just say, Dr. Jones did talk to the policy committee that we have had incidents Which then bring to bear the questions about our policy from students and their counsel and their parents. So I don't know, you know, it is an occurrence that we do deal with. And it's my understanding that we are then asked as a, as a school district, what is our policy? And what are our regulations in, in the, in the, in a typical sexual harassment, sexual discrimination base? So the lack of having something might concern, you know, is obviously a concern that then that opens us up to a different set of problems, right? I mean, it's back to kind of, we were talking about balance earlier about, you know, COVID risks, right? The, the That you have to look at the whole picture, that the number of incidents Of other types of sexual harassment or sexual discrimination may be more not, I'm using voluminous is the wrong word, but more frequent. Then where the concern is. And so on balance, you know, what's the better approach? I mean, and obviously we each have to vote the way we believe is the right way to vote.
If I may say one other thing, the C I A C rules on eligibility Permit such participation. So the only other So the only other, I was asked the question about the possibilities of what ifs. Um, it certainly is possible that um a school district that does not comply with the CIAC rules um uh may not, depending on how the CIAC views that. Um, I don't know whether the CIAC would permit continued participation in interscholastic athletic events if there is non-compliance with their rules and their policies. Um, and, and so I just do want to point out, it's not just uh the United States Department of Education. It's not just um the state laws and the State Board of Education and the board's responsibility as an agency of the state. Uh, but there could also be implications relative to participation overall in athletics. Um, uh, depending on how the CAIC um interprets its own rules and, and um the penalties or consequences for non-compliance that it issues.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I, I, now I'm, thank you. I, I'm, I'm more confused than I was when I came in the room. So basically, I believe Christina, you mentioned something, maybe I misheard you, that you're able to separate this policy into something which we can, we're all okay with and then one.
No, I, what I was saying is that we have a student policy and a staff policy.
So we can't vote on the staff.
We can vote on each policy separately, and we need to vote on, I think, I would say, based on the session, we would vote on the each.
Michael mentioned about legality, and I'm thinking perp walk and all that sort of stuff. I'm like, well, I don't want to go there. So I'm all confused. I'm not a lawyer. I don't do lawyer stuff very well. I usually have people do that for me, and I, I don't want to get myself in trouble. So is there any?
That's why Andy's here.
But uh, thank you for what, I'm sure what you said made sense to somebody, but it, it certainly didn't to me very well, so I didn't really understand exactly what you said. Sorry about that. It's just me. And so is there a way we could vote on one and put the other one off to another time so we can gather more information?
I think we should vote on it tonight because we're already two meetings in kind of arguably three. So I think we should take a vote, see where the vote is, and then we'll go from there, regardless of outcome.
Ms. Kowalski?
Is there any way to put in a, I, I don't want to put in a carve out because it's the wrong way to play it, but I, something that specifically addresses this type of situation that could be dealt with on a case-by-case scenario so that it can be evaluated. Uh, because I certainly, look, if there is a a student that is transitioning in one way, shape or form, certainly they're going through enough in their life, right? And, and they don't need any additional burdens. My whole point here is that everybody needs a fair shot and a fair playing field. And doing, and doing this without any guidance or parameters for which this would happen does not level the playing field, does not create a environment by which there is a, a competitive field. It, it, it just doesn't. And so the fact is here, and maybe we're just leaps and bounds above everybody else, or maybe everybody else isn't just bold enough to speak out about this and is offended as, is as offended as I am about this, and I think there are some other members of the board that are. But to say that, we're not saying no, never. We're saying it has to be dealt with a case-by-case basis, addressing the issue, putting a policy in place to deal with the occurrences of sexual harassment that for which Title IX was intended to protect and dealing with our legal obligation, but also addressing the fact that this, if this does happen, that we address it in that specific context to make sure that all of the stakeholders involved are listened to and make sure that they are protected.
Ms. Hirsch?
I, I'm having a very difficult time with this conversation. Uh, I, it is our responsibility to protect those that need to be protected for students and staff to be able to walk in the doors and feel comfortable and protected and know that there's a policy that speaks to this, that our regulations, you know, lay out what happens. Uh, Cody was talking earlier about consequences. Consequences are important to understand. Um, I, I have a female athlete in my home. Uh, I have a male athlete in my home. I've not ever been in a transgendered body. I don't know what that feels like. I can't even begin to imagine, but I have plenty of friends who have children in that position. I, I do not feel comfortable being the arbiter of what occurs in that place, and I, I, I think it is a very difficult position to put all of us in at this point. It's a, it is not outlined in this policy in that way. It is something that, you know, it is, again, it's in the state courts right now. Um, and, and I think if there is a change, that is something that we should immediately then address, but I mean, and I can ask our, our legal counsel, you know, in, in the past 10 years, how many times has this situation occurred? Um, I, I literally can only think of two or three times. I, I just feel that it is our responsibility to make the decisions for the majority of our students without negatively impacting the minority um of, of different groups, and I just, we are behind in having this approved for quite some time. Um, and I just feel very uncomfortable not having it there to protect those, the majority of our students and staff if they're, you know, if they have some kind of issue in, in this regards. You know, not in sports, just in general life.
Michael, Joseph?
Yeah, I, I think we might be getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. I think we should uh move towards, towards a vote here. I agree with Christina. I think we have to vote on this policy, and should it go down, then Christina's not going to like this. Then I think it, it's incumbent upon the Policy Committee or some kind of ad hoc committee to try again and draft something that, that reaches approval, but I think um we might be getting ahead. I think, I think we probably should move towards a vote.
Ms. Costin?
I don't, I don't remember seeing a transgender policy in this read. Is this an?
It's just generally on the basis, like, if you look at what the definition of the protected.
Correct.
Okay, I was just, I think we should split up, we can split the policies up. I was just going to say, um, I have a, um, I hear you, Karen. I, I am, I went to the University of Notre Dame and I'm an athlete. Of course, I wasn't good enough to play Division One sports, but um I appreciate the um, the role of women having an opportunity. Um, having said that, this is a very, I am much more worried, let me put it in a finance way, so maybe Cody can understand it. There's a risk reward here, and um to Karen's point, we are at a point 0000001% scenario that we're talking about, and we need to protect ourselves against the 99% sexual harassment scenario. It sounds like this is the law. I'm not, there are a lot of laws I don't like. In fact, I do not like speed limits because I unfortunately have a heavy foot, so. Um, but, you know, I have to follow the law. So I, while it's not necessarily how I feel personally great about for a very, but it's the point 0001% scenario that, you know, maybe it'll change one day, and then we'll have to address it again in policy, and that's for the courts to work through. But until then, I'm a little bit more worried about leaving us exposed as, as a board, and, and that worries me a little bit more. So, um, can I ask you? I, I really, really, we're trying to conduct our meeting. We were very respectful of you. I'd like that to continue. So, thank you. So go ahead, um, Ms. Downey.
And I think, um, just to ask the council about um other districts that have gone, that have not adopted this. Are, are you aware of any, or, I mean, just kind of, could you give us a little background?
No, I'm, I'm not aware. So we represent uh the majority of um Connecticut school districts. Um, and uh Connecticut school districts, uh, I've not aware of any Connecticut school district that has not adopted a policy in compliance with the current Title IX law. Um, what I can say is that there have been um challenges uh in other states to uh boards of education that have adopted laws that have restricted access to, for example, bathrooms or locker rooms. Uh, those lawsuits have been um heavily fought. Uh, those challenges have been uh successful to those board policies, and um uh there certainly has been legal exposure to those school, to those school districts um through school boards that adopted such policies. Um, us, just, uh, somebody had raised, and I, I, it's hard because I can't see everybody um well on my screen, but um one of the Board of Ed members had raised concern about sort of the risk. There was one additional risk that I did not mention that I probably should just, um, you know, kind of worst-case scenario lawyering, uh, which is that, um, as you know, you all are, you, each of you is indemnified, and the Board of Education is indemnified for um against and held harmless um against lawsuits in connection with your um official activities. Um, there is an exception uh to that um under 10 dash 235 of the Connecticut General Statutes, which is anything that is willful, wanton, or um malicious. So uh, again, I'm, I'm not suggesting that that um is in play right now here. Um, I, I will just say that the law um at this point in Connecticut, given the dismissal of the, of the Sewell case, uh, and the fact that it is currently on appeal, uh, and presumably we will get an answer from the Second Circuit on that case. Um, the current law is um, uh, you know, for this point in time, um, is in fact in this state uh stable. We will await the decision of the Second Circuit on the Sewell case.
Okay, so Ms. Downey, would you like to now separate the policies?
Yeah, so why don't I, we'll call the question. Um, I'm going to start with the staff policy. How about that?
That's a good choice.
Yeah, savvy play. It's numerically lower. Um, I'm gonna move that the board adopt. Uh, Chair, I think we do need to.
Draw the initial motion.
I withdraw my initial motion. I'm going to make a motion that we approve policy for 000.1 um in the form presented.
I'd like to second that.
Is that the staff?
This is the staff policy. Correct.
Okay, can, um, we now have a, do you want to do it in?
You don't, she seconded it.
We second it.
You could do it on a, a voice or a hand vote.
All in favor? Okay, that passes eight zero. Um, go ahead, Ms. Downey, next one.
I'm gonna make a motion um that the board approve proposed policy number 5145.44 in the form presented.
Anyone seconding that? Ms. Hirsch? Okay, all. Okay, so that's four four. So it does not pass. I'll pass it four four. No. If someone had seen it, it would have passed, but not at four four. Okay, um, anything further, Andy, or?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um, I, um, it is important um to, to adopt a policy, so I'll leave you with that. It's a legal requirement. Um, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay. Moving now into discussion items. Uh, the first discussion item is regarding new courses at Greenwich High School. This is the first read. Dr. Calabella.
Thank you so much. I have two program administrators at the high school that are going to present two new courses, Lucia Reco and John DeLuca.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
We can. Go ahead.
Great.
Good evening. I'm Lucia Reco, the Bella House Administrator and Social Studies Program Administrator. I'm very excited to present the new state mandated course, African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino Studies. The course provides an opportunity for students to learn about the accomplishments, challenges, intersections, and perspectives of African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino people in the United States. By taking this course, students will strengthen their own sense of identity and deepen their understanding of historic and contemporary tensions around race and difference. Ultimately, this course will allow students to become more engaged and informed citizens, which is in line with the mission and vision of the Greenwich Public Schools as outlined in the vision of the graduate. The State Education Resource Center of Connecticut, CERC, has written a detailed curriculum guide. As the state wishes for the student experience in the course to be consistent across districts, districts are expected to follow this guide with fidelity. CERC has included lesson plans and links to materials and resources for each day of the course. In the first semester, students will study African-American and Black history. The second semester will focus on Puerto Rican and Latino history. I have linked the curriculum guide in the course proposal. If you would like to read more specifically what the course entails, it is a year-long social studies elective, which will include an honors option, and it, it is open to juniors and seniors at GHS. Students will learn about the course in course selection meetings with their counselors, which will begin after the February vacation. And the social studies and English departments will also promote the course in their 10th and 11th grade classes. Please let me know if you have any questions. Okay, seeing none, let's have John present.
Nice try, Dr. Calabella. Hold on a second.
I was trying. I was trying to move it along.
Yeah, yeah. You see we're behind. There's nothing we can do about that. Okay, Ms. Hirsch.
Well, you answered one of my questions with, which was, did we take the CERC uh curriculum and make any revisions to it? So thank you for that. Um, the other question I was gonna say is, you know, I know you probably will not have any idea uh until this is uh discussed with students, but how many sections of this do you uh expect to possibly have? Um, and uh, you know, what happens if we kind of go over that?
I'm hoping we fill at least two sections, so that would be roughly 50 students that would sign up for the course. Um, if, you know, if there were more that, than that, that signed up, that, that really doesn't, what, what would happen is this course is essentially going to pull from other courses because 95% of our students at GHS take social studies for four years. So essentially, we're going to be drawing from electives that the kids would, would already be taking.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kowalski? Go ahead.
So I'm having quite a night tonight because I left my glasses at home until my daughter came and my notes I had taken on this particular thing, so I'm gonna have to wing it. Um, so just, I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't quite hear you. So the um, we've adopted the entire course, the full curriculum that CERC has provided that gave us the hyperlink. The answer to that was yes?
Yes.
Why did we do that?
Because we're required.
Why are we required? Well, I mean, it, it's, it seems to be very prescriptive. I mean, the state came out with like a day-to-day, almost class-by-class designation of exactly what we should be teaching. And my concern with this particular class is if you read it in detail, it talks about, um, you should go to the links, but um, it talks about basically in broad brushstrokes, everything that we've said we're not teaching here, which is critical race theory. So I'm very concerned that we've, one, not taken a pen to this particular curriculum, why we have to take it at, directly from the state on, on this, because we've stood here and we've heard administrators say over and over again, we're not teaching critical race theory. Well, that's exactly what this class teaches.
This is required by the state, Karen, and we have to follow what the state uh directs us to adopt. It's the same thing as adopting the 25 credits that are required now for graduation. We have to offer it. It does not mean that students have to take it. It is an offering. It is a, uh, an elective course, and we have to follow the requirements that the state has given us.
Yeah, I, I find, I, I just, I find, I'm, it's better that it's an elective class, but when you talk about this um and the specific things that it teaches, um, you know, one of the particular things, and again, I wish I had had my notes in front of me because I wrote down and went through this, but it, it specifically talks about, um, it, it relates Columbus in 1492 to the current police brutality against Latinos. That's making a, you know, that's making a very bold statement right there, and it also talks about the um systemic racism, and it doesn't even ask the question, is there systemic racism? It just assumes that there is. And I just find this class to be completely out of line with what the Greenwich Public Schools should, how it should be teaching. It should be having these discussions. It should be having these discussions rather than presupposing that these things are actually happening. It also takes a very hard line in policing in general, and I would find, in fact, we have a police officer standing in the back of our room here. If he found out, and if he had taken a look at what they're teaching and how it's being done, I think he'd take offense to it as well. So I just, I find this, I just find this completely irresponsible and not something that should be happening in Greenwich.
So the good thing, Karen, is that the state is open to feedback from all people, from parents, from students, and from educators. So that is something that we will be able to make sure that we put out so that teachers, parents, and students can make comments about it over the next year. So I think that the feedback will be very valuable to the State Department of Education, and we will be able to comply with what they have asked us to do. So as soon as we get that information as to where you, we can get feedback, we will make sure that everybody has access to that.
Sounds good. Sorry, can we, Mr. Kelly, are we?
No, that's, that's fine. All I'd like to say is I'd actually like to audit this class so that I can actually provide feedback. I will carve out time out of my day to go to this class so I can provide adequate feedback to the state.
Very good. Good. Mr. Kelly.
My question is this. I understand that it's a requirement by the state to offer. Is it this class we're required to offer, or is it a class that addresses African American, Black, Latino, and Puerto Rican studies?
Right now, it is this class.
That is correct, is this class.
You say right now. What does that mean?
Well, depending on what feedback we get from the state and from the teachers, parents, and students, they may make a different outcome, but we don't know that yet.
So, and at this point, we are required by the state to adopt this, this class?
Yes, and if kids don't want to take it, that's okay, but we have to offer it.
So, Michael.
Yeah, so, so by this class, just to clarify, we mean this, the scope and sequence that the state's developed, right? That day-by-day scope and sequence. They, which surprised me. You know, you read through that, I mean, in four months' time, you know, you're going from ancient African kingdoms to with the present day with, you know, an African American history, and then you switch to Latino. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't surprise me because if you read through the document, you see that it was drafted by a committee of over a hundred people, so it's very much a mile wide and an inch deep. The, it, is there, are there, is there any other example of the state mandating this kind of lockstep, day-by-day curriculum? Do we have any other example of that in the school? Or is this, is this a new state, state, state invention?
That I really would have to look into. I'm not sure. I don't know if Dr. Jones knows, but I am, I am just looking at, at what changes have been made since the new commissioner came on board and the new director of academics, so I'm not really sure. I would have to get back to you on that.
Because, because obviously, we all know, anyone who's taught knows that any kind of quick, I mean, it's unrealistic. You can't plan out a whole term, day by day, you know, before every student, you know, classes change, things happen, so.
Correct.
So, so this kind of mandate obviously is, is silly from the start, but I do appreciate that it's, this is an elective. I, and it's, and it's an important topic. The, this kind of drill downs the specificity on the day just, just boggles my mind.
Right. I look at it, I personally look at it at as more as a guide, but as we work through it, depending on how many students choose to participate, I think that we will learn a lot about it, about what is appropriate and what is meaningful and what maybe we don't need to address as much. So I think it will be a learning experience for all of us, and I'm excited that one of the board members wants to audit the course. I think that's great. And I think that we can get a lot of feedback, and it will help us to move forward with what we want and what we think is important for our Greenwich community and students.
Maybe just a fun thought for us is if the state can require us to teach a class that is maybe intellectually lacking or perhaps even misleading to students, maybe we should consider having a critical thinking class or something to encourage them to take if they're, if they're taking this elective, because they can't force us not to teach something, at least yet. And critical, critical thinking might be a helpful way to offset some of the stuff. These classes are obviously overly politicized and tend to have social agendas associated with them that aren't academic or related to what schools should be teaching. So just something for us to consider as a way to counteract a heavy hand from the state here.
Thank you.
Anything else? Pardon me? Yes, let's go to the next class. Thank you.
John, thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, you can. Go ahead, John.
Okay. Hello, I'm John DeLuca. I'm the science administrator at the high school. We are also proposing a new course, Honors Anatomy and Physiology. A thorough understanding of human body systems is a critical requisite for students considering careers in biomedical sciences, biotechnology, and pharmaceuticals. Prior to two thousand nineteen, GHS students gained this valuable learning in AP Biology. However, in two thousand nineteen, the College Board made its second critical revision to the AP Biology curriculum in the last decade, essentially removing all anatomy and physiology from the course. While there's an online, on-level human biology course offered at the high school, there is no honors level equivalent. Consequently, with the exception of one unit during freshman honors biology, GHS students currently have no opportunities to study human biology at the honors level. The proposed course would fill this significant gap in our course offerings. We're proposing a one semester honors anatomy and physiology course taught in the fall. Students taking this course will also have the opportunity to take honors biochemistry, a one semester course that will be taught in the adjacent spring semester. Honors Anatomy Physiology will not serve as a prerequisite for the honors biochem. Currently, there are three full-year honor science options for students at GHS in their juniors, junior and senior years. Honors Anatomy Physiology would provide a fourth honor science course option for students who may be less advanced in math or who aren't interested in taking AP level courses. Furthermore, there is currently no appropriate class for students enrolled in AP Biology to drop into if they find the course too demanding. Typically, a handful of students enrolled in AP Biology end up dropping the course within a week or so because of the intense workload. Honors Anatomy Physiology would provide an appropriate course for students to move into. There are essential aspects of the Honors Anatomy Physiology course that align with our vision of the graduate. These connections have been carefully planned by our teachers who designed the course. I would like to highlight one of these as just an example of the unique opportunity that this course will offer students. Students in the class will compete, complete a disease diary assignment completed for each of the units in the course. The expected student outcome of the work is for students to apply and integrate basic anatomy and physiology knowledge to clinical applications, accessing reliable references and communicating in written form the information effectively to peers. Peer review will be a critical component of these assignments. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Hirsch? Thank you. I think this is a class that a lot of students are really going to be interested in, as I'm sure there are a lot of students who are, you know, interested in going forward in a medical career, but my quick question to you is, I know this is noted as an honors course. Will it be offered at all as a non-honors? I know you said that there are three full-year honors science courses that are being offered, but I didn't know if this was something you were considering a non-honors option for as well.
We currently have a non-honors version of this class already in our, our course selection, so.
Thank you. I must have missed that when I read the course guide, so never mind then. Thank you.
Okay, did you have a question, Ms. Downey? Okay, real fast. So then, Mr. DeLuca, just so I fully understand it. So, right now, if AP Biology was considered too challenging, where do they, they drop now just to? General bio and then practical?
Yeah, it's, so, I mean, there are courses that they would drop into that really don't quite align with AP Biology. Things like honors marine biology would be a good example, honors environmental science. This would be a much better fit.
Got it. Okay, makes sense. Maybe I'll audit this course. Thanks so much. Do you have a question?
Could I just make a comment? I think this is a really fantastic idea, and I just wanted to commend whoever came up with it. I think it's, I like the responsiveness of recognizing that just because the AP test changed doesn't mean that the, you know, knowledge worthy of pursuing changed, and I wanted to commend the, you know, everyone involved for coming up with this. It's very cool.
Thank you.
We have a great science department, I have to say. They're very good.
One quick question. When, um, we obviously have to get this on the next agenda to vote on these two courses, because the Course of Study Guide goes, I mean, kids are starting to choose their classes for next year, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so we should, we'll move this one quickly to the next.
So do you just, into questions, so do you put it in the Course of Study Guide for pre-selection if, prior to a board vote, or how do you, you know, what's the mechanics of helping you guys out with that?
We put it in the Course of Study Guide with fingers crossed.
Yep, and if it's not approved, then we will cross it out.
Right.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you very much. It sounds like you're probably staying with us, Mr. DeLuca. Oh, I'm sorry, you're not next, though. First up is Mr. D'Amico for the K through eight STEM report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Calaballo and I are pleased to bring our collective academic teams to you this evening, not only to showcase their outstanding efforts, but the efforts of our wonderfully talented Greenwich educators in the area of STEM. Leading off our presentation tonight is our Director, K eight Science Coordinator. This is Tara Fogel. So, Mrs. Fogel.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Good evening. As Mr. D'Amico said, my name is Tara Fogel, and I'm the proud program coordinator for K eight Science. I'm fortunate enough to start us off tonight on behalf of my fellow coordinators in K eight Math, nine, twelve Math and Science. While there is a lot of detailed information in the written report regarding both math and science, we would like to remind our board and listeners this evening that we have covered K eight Math presentations in previous board meetings. Mr. Mike Reed presented his Big Ideas update on Wednesday, November seventeenth, and the accompanying report and corresponding slides from this presentation are available on Board Docs. With a packed agenda this evening, I'll be intentional with our time together. This year, I have presented on curriculum shifts, advanced programming in grades three to five, and NGSS achievement in grades five and eight. Tonight, I will talk to you all about four strategic levers for the ongoing evolution of the K eight Science program. Let's get started. Our four areas for work in the coming years are as followed. We will work to improve NGSS scores for students testing in grades five and eight. We will continue to focus on curriculum implementation with fidelity across our eleven elementary and three middle schools. We will revisit the structure of advanced science programming in grades three to five out and at the middle school to ensure it meets the needs of our students and community stakeholders. And we will maintain a dedication to innovation in curriculum and implementation for strong and sustained student outcomes. Now, a bit more about NGSS achievement. I am confident that we can see continued success and improvement on our NGSS assessments in the coming years as we transition away from the current COVID limiting factors. First, the grade five assessments. Our planning includes improving educator science content knowledge, starting with the grade five classroom teachers to build efficacy around disciplinary core ideas. We will follow this with strategic use of the interim assessment items and specialized supports in our schools where students have been historically disadvantaged. Supports in these buildings include modeled lessons by myself, our education consultants, and identified high-performing teachers. I have already begun this work with an increased availability and access to myself as a coordinator at common planning time during program meetings after school and teacher choice program days. Looking forward to the grade eight NGSS test, I continue to work closely with the middle school science team across Eastern, Central, and Western middle schools. I will provide specific training using our digital platforms based on teacher requests and curriculum needs. I will also work with the middle school team to utilize the interim assessment items to continue to prepare our students, not only for the content and skills presented on the NGSS test, but also comfortability with the user platform and the cognitive load it requires for navigation. The second lever, lever for change is adherence to the curriculum and implementation thereof. I use a collaborative approach to this by working with building administrators as we visit K five classrooms during STEM blocks and plan for teacher needs during curriculum program meetings. At elementary schools in particular, we will implement pacing check-ins and structure the use of interim assessments throughout the year to gauge student growth at each grade level in grades three to five. At the middle level, I continue to work with my learning facilitators from each building to support curriculum implementation on a monthly basis. Now, for our third and likely most anticipated lever for change, it's the restructuring of our advanced science programming here. We will start this with identifying students in grades three to five for ALP science instruction within the STEM block. This change means that students will not be placed into science enrichment within grades three to five solely based on math scores as they currently are. We are excited about this evolution of the program, as we know that some students can show a propensity for science outside of math or reading achievement. At the middle level, we are returning to homogeneous classes, and we are removing the independent prophecex. We're scaffolding an advanced curriculum in grades six through eight and providing multiple onramps to advanced science during each grade level, as well as between sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. Now, let me explain how the on-level curriculum will differ from our advanced course. The plan for next year is to separate these two class levels, and in grade six, we will include advanced resources and enrichments and enrichment in the units of instruction. Students in advanced classes will master the same performance expectations as their grade level counterparts with the addition of more rigorous text and readability length in content, the use of more complex data sets on our Tuva platform. And along with these content advancements comes the assessment criteria on rubrics that assess students' abilities in the eight science and engineering practices. We will assess these at the grade level performance bands above that of six eight. In addition to this advanced curriculum, advanced students will engage in one intensive unit of instruction in school with their advanced counterparts in their classroom, which we will refer to as a seminar. This unit will be project-based, involve large opportunities for student exploration and choice, and includes content from the performance expectations currently in the on-level grade eight curriculum, but more about that in a bit. Let's move on to grade seven. This is similar to grade six. In addition to the advanced curriculum, advanced students will engage in two more intensive seminars. These again involve larger, large opportunities for student exploration and choice and more of our performance expectations currently in the grade eight curriculum, which is an excellent segue. With up to two years of advancement under their belts, eighth-grade advanced science students will engage in a predominantly high school-level science experience. The course no longer mirrors that of their on-levels grade eight counterparts. Students now will complete four units of instruction, though only two of which will cover the remaining grade eight performance expectations in preparation of the six through eight NGSS exam. The other two units will look specifically at targeting performance expectations from high school science standards. The creation of these units will be completed in concert with guidance and support from Mr. John DeLuca, our nine, twelve program administrator, as together he and I look to target performance expectations that may not be covered in general course offerings at Greenwich High School or tracks that students currently fall into. This interdisciplinary design of advanced science in grade eight allows for students to have their needs met with an alternative experience from their on-level counterparts. The curriculum will expand content knowledge and increase ability in the eight science and engineering practices, all of which will be assessed using grade level N bands from the nine, twelve standards. The design of the six, eight advanced curriculum allows for multiple onramps where students who develop a curiosity of the natural world or a propensity for engineering throughout middle school are able to move up and into advanced coursework during grades seven or eight. The final and ongoing lever for strategic change is that of philosophy. I'm dedicated to staying abreast of evolving trends in science education. I remain connected to the broader education, science education community and continue to engage in personal learning in that arena. I bring my knowledge and expertise to the role of coordinator and promote the district goals of continued excellence in science education. In the coming years, as science comes back into focus on our broader curriculum management plan, we will improve student experience with more opportunities for hands-on inquiry, place-based learning, and field experiences outside of our classroom. As a board, you can expect to see a shift in the way we prioritize spending in science to align with this philosophy over the coming years. And in support of this, I am also dedicated to providing our K eight teachers with meaningful and actionable professional learning. My goal is to keep teachers current, give them space to take risks and try new things, all while maintaining a steadfast dedication to strong student outcomes. We know that that starts at K five, which covers it for me for now. Next up, I'm going to introduce Dr. Shanta Smith, who is excited to share about innovations, just like the ones I mentioned currently happening at our steam magnet school, Hamilton Avenue. We have forged a strong partnership in the past few months since my hiring, and I am excited to announce that I have already begun work to help out students there. We've scheduled two teacher trainings with her staff as well as parent outreach sessions around their steam symposium. The work does not end there, and I'll let Dr. Smith explain more. Take it away, Dr. Smith.
Thank you for allowing me this time to provide a brief update on the hard work of our dynamic Hamilton Avenue scholars, our exceptional educators, and our super supportive Hamilton Avenue school families. The question that you see on the slide really exemplifies part of our goal at Hamilton Avenue School. Next slide, please. During the fall of 2021, we focus on implementing big ideas in math. In the winter of 2022, we're implementing the steam challenge symposium launch events for students, staff, and families. Our first event for families is on January twenty seventh. In the spring of 2022, we will host our first annual steam challenge symposium. The date is June third. For the steam challenge symposium, Hamilton Avenue scholars will complete a problem-based learning activity by selecting a topic of interest within a specific steam framework. Scholars will complete challenges, research, reflect, create, design, and share, and present their discoveries at the symposium using a display method of their choice. Next slide, please. So far this year, we've accomplished many of the goals that we set last year. We planned our first steam challenge symposium. We hosted our first Hamilton Avenue School Family Academy. We launched our first Hamilton Avenue School Teachers Institute with training from Abbott. We also hosted COVID-friendly celebration of the arts outdoors and virtually. And the teachers are engaging in a peer review cycle of big ideas math implementation with our consultant, Dr. Todd White. So moving forward, we will continue to communicate and celebrate our successes through creative marketing of our magnet school theme to our stakeholders. We will also tailor our professional learning needs to meet the needs of the adult learners at Hamilton Avenue School. The coordinators have been great with facilitating that thus far. We will also maintain our current partnerships and we're hoping to expand and diversify our community-based partnerships to enhance our magnet school theme. And finally, our dedicated steam units of instruction for K to five, we look forward to working with Ms. Fogel and Mr. Reed to help us with this particular initiative. Thank you for your time.
John, you're up next. You're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, John.
So I'm going to present the STEM report for nine, 12. Greenwich High School offers a comprehensive and diverse science program that pushes students to succeed in the core courses of biology, chemistry, and physics, as well as a diverse array of elective courses that rival small colleges. Over the past few years, our department has worked hard to align with the Connecticut next generation science standards. In our classes, students engage deeply in the content. They are taught how to pose scientific questions, design investigations, and communicate their findings effectively. Our goal is to inspire and challenge students so that they will become scientifically literate and engaged. In review of the 2020-21 academic year, one way to understand student success is to review the standardized tests. In science, this was the Connecticut NGSS assessment given in fifth, eighth, and eleventh grade. In May of 2021, GHS students took the Connecticut assessment for just the second time, the first one being spring of 2019. Eighty-two percent of the juniors met or exceeded expectations on the 2021 NGSS assessment. This is the exact percentage of students that met or exceeded expectations on the 2019 NGSS assessment. Because district-by-district scores were unavailable this year, it wasn't possible to compare results against comparative districts. However, it's important to note that in 2019, the eighty-two percent value was the fifth highest in the state for high schools. Some reasons for our success continues to be the the GHS science staff implementing the aligned curriculum that we have. Our freshman and sophomore courses of biology and chemistry are aligned to NGSS. Students have a choice how to explore science their junior year. These junior year courses of physics, marine biology, and environmental sciences are all aligned with NGSS assessment in their own unique way. We believe there really is a benefit here in allowing students this choice. Credit has to be given to the science staff for their creativity and deep content knowledge to develop these courses so that they maintain their core content yet delivered authentic connections between the standards and the content. Professional development and shared planning time continue to be key factors here in providing teachers the necessary time to collaborate and learn from each other. Greenwich High School is also fortunate that because the curricula have been vertically aligned district-wide, high school students have had the longest exposure to NGSS-based curriculum. Another mechanism to measure success in science at GHS is by looking at our AP scores. Here, historical context is very important. All AP science courses were on a positive trajectory prior to 2020. In fact, all AP science courses except AP Physics I had reached five-year highs in 2019. Physics had actually achieved that the year prior. In reviewing our student performances last couple of years, we do feel the pandemic has played a role. Why? Well, this may be because of fewer labs and hands-on activities as well as the changes in the testing practices that the college board has adopted to increase their levels of security for the online tests. We're hoping that as we return to normalcy, our AP scores will follow suit. Of course, the pandemic also brought positive change to GHS and to the science department. One positive outcome of the pandemic has been increased use of online resources. Of note is the Explore Learning platform, which provides our students with online lab investigations that challenge them to think critically. This platform happens to align very well with NGSS as well. Teachers are continuing to use online resources at a much higher rate and through professional development and collaborative meetings, our staff continues to share and explore with each other. Ultimately, however, online resources cannot replace hands-on, hands-on classroom labs and activities. It's wonderful to see that students in our classrooms are once again engaged in labs and investigations at the frequency that they were pre-pandemic. Our goal in the GHS Science Department in the upcoming year is to continue to monitor the implementation of our curriculum as well as to review the curricula and electives outside of the NGSS sequence of classes. One final note in the success of GHS is our science research program. Greenwich High School continues to hold one of the most successful high school research programs in the country. Twenty twenty-one was no exception. Students from Greenwich High School were awarded over $150,000 in scholarships and prizes for their accomplishments. While the successes for Greenwich High School are far-reaching, here are some of the highlights. Four of our students were selected amongst the 300 scholars in the 2021 Regeneron Science Talent Search, the nation's most prestigious science competition. Amazingly, two of the four that were select, two of these four were selected as finalists, each earning an additional $25,000. It's important to note that no other high school in the country, be it public, private, or specialized in science, had two finalists amongst the 40 most talented science students nationally. The two students were featured on NPR, NBC Nightly News, and Forbes Magazine. In fact, one of these finalists began his GHS journey in the ESL program, which speaks volumes about the opportunities that GHS offers to all students who wish to affect positive change. This alone would be an incredible year for GHS research. However, there are more accolades to share. At the 2021 Connecticut Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, three of the five Connecticut students invited to compete at the national level were from Greenwich High School. Days later, at the 2021 Connecticut Science and Engineering Fair, 14 Greenwich High School students were invited as finalists to compete for top prizes and awards. Our students essentially swept all of the top awards. As you can imagine, there are plenty more accolades to share about our science research program. We simply don't have the time. Luckily, they have been, those details have been provided in the report. I think now it's my pleasure to introduce Andrew Byrne.
Good evening, Chair Stowe, Board of Education members, and Dr. Jones. My name is Andrew Byrne and it is my pleasure to report out on the GHS Math and Computer Science Departments. During this pivotal year, the department has been working diligently to understand the impact of the pandemic on our students and to support them with the acquisition of skills and concepts and to continue to develop our students as problem solvers and critical thinkers. To that end, we have dedicated professional learning time to reviewing pre-assessment data and conducting course pacing audits to ensure that we are delivering an accessible and robust learning experience to all our students. Next slide, please. Building off the success of the K eight adoption of big ideas, the GHS Math Department is looking forward to refreshing its Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II resources. A Greenwich High School math textbook committee has been formed with representatives from the Board of Ed, District and Building Administrators, Parents, Special Education, ELL, Literacy, Educators, Students, and Members of our own department. The committee began working in November and looks forward to sharing the results with the board in the coming months. This has been a very inclusive and transparent process. A running summary of the committee's work can be located by visiting the website that's posted on this slide. The department is grateful to the board, Dr. Jones, and Dr. Carrillo for supporting the work of the Greenwich High School Math Department, and we look forward to sharing our research with the board later this school year. Thank you.
Any questions?
I think so. Let us sit down. I think we could bounce all over the place. I don't know if we have to do it by elementary or high school. Just have at it. Any questions? No? Okay, Michael Joseph.
So first of all, thank you. The, I mean, I, I think the enthusiasm that that all of you bring to the presentation was, was really, was really clear and I appreciate it. I think it is, what is this, my fourth meeting, third meeting? I don't know. It seems like 20. They, but it's, but it is the first meeting where we're really talking, able to really talk about teaching and learning, you know, and there's no fault of us. We had to deal with a budget, but it's refreshing and it's important. And I think that's, 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 that's great. It is, I think as we get into talking more about the strategic plan and role of stretch goals and SMART goals and things like that, I am hopeful that these presentations in the future, just what you heard from, from PTAC earlier, will be grounded a little more in student performance data and how we're seeing benchmark growth and all students grow. I understand right now we're in a transition, so I don't expect that now, but, but, but I, I'm hopeful that we'll see that paradigm shift. The other, the other paradigm shift that, that, that was alluded to, but I, I, and, and I know it's in the back of people's heads, but I think it's important to, to highlight. You know, we, we, a few times you heard the phrase on-ramps used. The, and I think that's, that, that's critically important when we're talking about different levels and different courses. You know, we're talking, you know, just as much as the conversation is about the enrichment that's happening for an advanced students and how we're pushing them ahead, the, we need to be talking about how in those other classes, we're bridging the gap. Like the, where is it? So for example, in those two sixth grade science sections, they, where is it that those, those, those gaps can be accelerated for both students? So more of those students can be in the other section of seventh grade. The, I, I, I think we need to try as much as we can to move away from a paradigm of sorting students. I'm not saying we are. That's, I'm not saying you're presenting that. The more we can think about bridging those gaps and making sure, the other thing I worry about is making sure that all courses have those rich, have enrichment and have those rich inquiry-based, problem-based experiences. I worry when I hear about all these exciting experiences at the advanced level and not at other levels. We just want to make sure that we're not falling into a trap there. I don't think we are. The, but that's, that's, that's my one concern as we, as, as we talk about these things moving forward.
I think I can just comment back on that for a moment and say thank you to Mr. Mercanti Anthony. And the idea of on-ramps and allowing students to meet their, their potential growth at any level within middle school is so important for us. And I think that's really strongly aligned with Dr. Jones's philosophy. And as a new coordinator and discussing these plans with her for advanced science shifts, I think that it became immediately clear that that's an important shift that we want to ensure that students are able to find success in their class. And then should they grow in a placement that they're in, that we give them that opportunity to grow and that we provide teachers with the know-how of how to, how to figure out if that student is ready to move forward and how, what are those look-for's and how are we going to move that student forward? So I'm glad to hear that our philosophies are aligning there.
Ms. Hirsch?
Well, first of all, I just wanted to, you know, say, follow with what Mr. Mercanti had said. Doctor, sorry, my bad. I should just go back to just calling you Mike, but anyway. I did ask to have that fixed. Anyway, but I, I was going to say, anyway, you know, your enthusiasm and your focus and dedication on, on our students really comes through in the, when you're giving these presentations. But I also wanted to agree with Dr. Mike in saying that I'm hoping that the next time we see this, we get to see some more data to sort of see where the growth is. I know that we are in our third, arguably not really third year for the NGSS type of, you know, aligned curriculum at the middle schools. And I'm really sort of hoping to see where we, where we really are with that. The first year we were interrupted with COVID and it's, it's been a weird two years since. But I wanted to ask one more quick question about the differences between on-level and advanced science. Is this what you are looking forward to doing for next year and beyond? I know we were going to revamp the advanced curriculum because it says right now, just for instance, six A, it mirrors the sixth, grade six curriculum with advanced resources and enrichment, which is kind of what it was when my children were in middle school. It was just the same curriculum, but deeper. So I didn't know if this is what we're looking to do now or this is what we're looking to, to do in the future. If, if for next year or we're reworking something going forward.
This is for next year and after conversations with teachers, with students, with parents and hearing that advanced science meant deeper or faster or longer, what we wanted to ensure that we do is we tease out exactly what activities are different in the advanced curriculum. So there'll be different overviews. There'll be different guides for parents to view online. There'll be specific places within each performance expectation that students are mastering where there is documents or assignments or readings or activities that on-level students do and then an advanced version for students who are in the advanced sections do separately. So there will be delineated tasks for that level.
So just to confirm, it will be the exact same curriculum between six and six A, seven, seven A? But the advanced class is just going to go deeper with additional performance tasks?
I get away from saying the exact same curriculum because you're, you're covering the same performance expectations. Yes, we've mapped out those PEs. There's X amount in each grade level and we keep the same amount in sixth and seventh grade for the advanced course, but they are engaging in different learning activities to meet their advanced learner needs. What we also are doing are adding some of those eighth grade performance expectations that they will not be getting because that eighth grade advanced course is using some of the high school performance expectations. We'll be teasing those out and using them in these seminar activities to ensure that by the end of eighth We'll be teasing those out and using them in these seminar activities to ensure that by the end of eighth grade, all students still experience all middle school performance expectations, and our advanced learners in eighth grade get this robust high school-esque experience.
I would love to have a further discussion, not this evening, and maybe I'll make an appointment to come in, because this is exactly the way we had advanced science before COVID. And it was exactly what for years the Board of Ed was saying we wanted, we didn't want. We wanted it to have its own curriculum, and I understand going back to this for next year may be the appropriate manner while we are building another curriculum, but I'd just love to see what, to sit down with you just to hear about what in reality that the main differences are, because I, I feel, I'm afraid we may be going back to exactly what we had before, which was what the Board had asked repeatedly not to have.
Yeah, we can definitely follow up with more.
And it may just be that I'm reading this incorrectly, and that may be the case, but I, I just am hoping to, to get a little more information.
Yeah, can I add to that? I'm gonna call on myself here. Because Karen, you hit on something there. It's funny, because what I can tell you right now in the middle school, and thankfully you recognize that, and you took the Board feedback on this loud and clear, is that the advanced pathway is not being received well. It's just extra homework that the children are doing on their own at night, and while I really enjoy my daughter's project, I don't think it's probably the appropriate way for them to be learning, so I'm happy that we're delineating again, and we're going to have six and six A separate, and I like that we're coming up with a seminar concept. Having said that, I agree, I want to make sure that we're not just going back, we're, this is the right interim step, I guess, but I'd like to know what the long-term goal is, because I don't want it to go back to, it's better than it is this year. It sounds like we're going to go back to the pre-COVID scenario, but you're right, the prior, I guess we're now going back three years. That also didn't seem to be perfectly what the Board was looking at. And I realize these things repeat itself, and that's kind of why I'm going to go to, it sort of leads to my next question, which I find ironic, is that we're looking at science in the grades three to five now being separate again from math and reading, and it being, it's something, you know, it's that you can matriculate into that on its own, which I'm really happy to see. But it's also just funny, because as I look at my freshman in high school, that's exactly what it was like when he was there. My middle school kid, it was different, and now for my fourth grader, it's different yet again. So I, I, we're trying different things, but let's sort of learn from maybe the fact that this is, we're basically going back to where we were six years ago. I actually think if I look at just my personal experience, it was the best of those, because, you're right, it was, you can be really advanced in science, but perhaps not as advanced in math and reading, and they don't all need to be connected. So I'm excited about that change, but maybe we should also, and I see Bonnie on here, if she could add a little bit about specifically what's happening there, maybe a little bit more about how we're testing to get into that program, and just how it's going to be unique again.
I'm not sure if Bonnie's elevated to a speaker right now, but I can share about the testing protocols. The testing to enter into the ALP science for grade three will be the NWEA science test and the COGAT composite, meaning there's a verbal and quantitative factor there. So those two are three assessments will be used for placement.
And then it's going to somehow be separate from the STEM block that we've now created for ALP, or can you explain that to me a little bit?
Correct. So the science portion of the STEM block within the ALP classroom will be the last thirty minutes. So students who are on level for science will return back to their on-level classroom, homeroom, and students who are out for science but not for math will then trickle into the ALP classroom. It is an extra transition, and we understand that, and we have determined as a team that it's worthwhile for students who have a propensity towards science or the natural world, or curiosity about engineering, be in a class with their like-minded peers for that time.
Understood. I think I see Bonnie elevated now, isn't she?
Yes, I'm elevated now.
Bonnie, so can you tell me, is this, are we basically going back to where we were sort of six years ago?
Similar to where we were before the adoption of NGSS, with the exception of at that point in time, we were enrichment only. With this new one, we will be replacement of their science. So the ALP science teacher will be teaching all of the science curriculum and not just enrichment, and then it won't be an additional.
Got it. Understood. Okay, that's a, that's a good change. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions about the placement processes, or did Derek? I didn't hear what Tara said because I was transitioning.
No, I think I'm good there, but stay on in case there are other questions, because there are hands going up, so. Yes, Ms. Downey, sorry.
Hi, I just, this wasn't necessarily for Bonnie. It may be more for Tara. At one point in the presentation, I was just, maybe I misunderstood it. It talked about movement, you know, kids advancing, kind of the pathways going from advanced from sixth to seventh or seventh, eighth. But did you make reference to that there's movement within a school year? Am I, did I hear it right, or I'm just trying to understand how that would work if so?
Yeah, we never want to prevent a student from being placed into a class where their needs are being met. So with principal, school counselor, teacher, parent conversation within a, a meeting of all stakeholders, a student can be moved into an advanced course should they need to, should that need to happen.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think it's great. And just to John DeLuca, I think it's fabulous that eighty-two percent of the kids met the NGSS standard. What was our goal, by the way? Like we say it was eighty-two percent, but what was our target number when, when we had that? Do we know?
My target was to, to do better than the previous year, so I suppose we didn't quite get there, but given the year that we had last year, I was pretty happy to be.
No, it's, it's an excellent number. I just didn't know, I wanted to say, like, if our goal was only whatever, seventy percent, or whatever. So, so next year we'll have eighty-three percent.
You know, we, we really haven't, it, we, it's, it's been a moving target, because the first year it was 2019, it was canceled in 2020, and so we're, we're still trying to get a handle on where we are with this, and that'll probably take a year or two more of data before we can start setting some goals like that.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Kloski?
So with the eighty-two percent on the NGSS standard, was that just for high school?
That, that was our high school number, yes.
So do we have a comparable number for K through eight?
We do have a number for six through eight, till the eighth grade test, and then K to five, which would be the fifth grade test for twenty nineteen, in grade eight, it was sixty-eight percent, and then in 2020, it was sixty-three percent. Sorry, twenty twenty-one. And then in 2019, for K five, it was seventy-five percent, and for twenty-one, it was sixty-seven percent.
So based upon those numbers, you've said you hope to see improvement. Do you have a goal that's set on where you'd like to see those numbers after this year?
We need more information about the NGSS test and norms around that test before I can feel competent to set a numerical goal. We did see minor backslides from nineteen to twenty twenty-one, but as Mr. DeLuca described, this is only two years of testing data. We don't have a strong enough trend where I'd feel comfortable putting a number out right now, but I'd be happy to follow up in more conversations and more research across future or aligned districts and looking at similar tests in other states before coming up with that goal.
Does the state of Connecticut have a particular standard, and where do we rank with respect to other school districts?
So unfortunately for this year, the 2021, they did not give us a data set where we could rank across other districts based on that, those COVID restrictions of the testing, so we don't have that for our most recent data set.
I also just want to remind you that when we presented the assessment report, it was very clear guidance from the state that we should not be putting up comparable data sets, given the fact that we had kids testing in various settings. So although there is data available to us, I wouldn't categorize it as the cleanest of data, and as Tara referenced, three years makes a trend, and we are very much looking forward to having our kids go through the assessment process this year and analyzing what I, what I view as much more clean data. And to Dr. Mercanti's point, I'm really looking forward to our retreat, because the strategic plan desperately needs to have through lines back to each individual school's school improvement plan, where we do set academic SMART goals in both areas, and in fact, in all three areas of what we test. So very important conversation coming up in February for us.
I had a, a couple of questions regarding the, the report that was sent. There's a comment in here that says quarter one observations have shown that some students are grappling with cognitive and executive functioning demands of project-based learning this school year. There's a consensus that these initial challenges are in part attributed to gaps in student and social emotional maturity. And it goes on. What do you mean by that?
As we transition in, out of our COVID constraints of last year, and we have these, these students who are sort of in this COVID bubble, our current sixth graders, we are noticing that project-based learning, which is the curriculum approach we have at the middle school level to achieve all of our performance expectation, does require a heavy cognitive load for our students to be able to navigate between content, skill, and process, or the lens in which we're asking them to think. And that was just noted by my teachers and in my own classroom visits that the project-based learning and how it may have been more successful pre-COVID, they're just anecdotally noting that that's what's happening with the students in their classrooms right now.
So what's being done to address it?
We're looking closely at the curriculum each time, and the first thing we did was increase a bit of flexibility within our pacing and allow our teachers a little bit of extra time to go back and look at those science and engineering practices and instruct our students explicitly within grade six. Some of my sixth grade teachers have been asking whether or not it is appropriate for them to start off with a launch unit that goes over a brief overview. As you know, we have eleven elementary schools that funnel into three middle schools, and each student, well, my goal over the next few years is to ensure that we're aligned and our curriculum is implemented with fidelity, and that's one of my strategic levels for change. But at this point, we do have a myriad of skills entering our sixth grade classrooms, so I'm allowing my teachers the flexibility to meet their students' needs where they are right now.
Another question from the report says specialized supports for schools with historically disadvantaged students, and it gives a one, two, and three. Can you just provide some additional color on what you mean by providing specialized supports? And what's, and, and does that mean disadvantaged students across all the schools that are being identified? Are they being identified, or is it specifically targeting schools on, within GPS?
Well, I won't call out any schools on a name-by-name basis. I will say that we have schools with higher populations of students who are historically disadvantaged, either socio-economically or racially. And what I'm doing at schools that have those high populations is I'm working with teachers in grade level planning sessions. I'm working with administrators on walkthroughs, and I'm developing plans for program meetings to help with teacher content efficacy, as well as learning and teaching strategies for them within the NGSS.
Is that because they have lower scores?
Yes.
Are you taking a break here? Because I had a question? Okay. Just real fast, I just wanted to say, I don't want to leave math off, because we're focusing a lot on science. I think it's maybe because we all, math has, has like a more established order, so it's probably, at least for me, it's easier to follow. But I'm really excited to see, especially in eighth grade, how we're pushing our science students to start going into the high school material, because to me, that's what we've been doing in math for a while, and I think it's really valuable, and we see the results as the kids come through the high school. So I'm really excited that you're sort of, to me, maybe it's the wrong analogy, but you're bringing that, sort of that same concept into science. Feel free to comment, but I said I wanted to ask one math question, just so we don't leave the math people hanging. And that is something that was actually, I think, mentioned in public comment earlier tonight, is that I do recall we used to have this goal, I think the person said it was seventy-five percent, I actually remember it being eighty percent of kids reaching Algebra I by eighth grade. Is that something we're still tracking too, or do we have a different goal within the math? Just to sort of use the same concepts that we were talking about in science.
You know, we haven't lost sight of that goal. In fact, we have, we have conversations quite often, Mr. Reed and I, on attaining that goal, and all things considered with the new adoption of the Big Ideas platform, we feel very encouraged, and I'll let Mike speak to this in more detail, that we will exceed that goal this year.
So is the question, what is the percentage of students that we have in algebra, or what is the percentage that are going to meet with success in algebra?
I guess I'd like the answer to both, and then what the goal is. If it's still seventy-five, is it eighty? I, I can't recall.
Yeah, so the actual goal itself, I believe, is, is to have seventy-five or more. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I do know it is above seventy-five percent. Looking at our Linkit scores that are coming through, you know, not completely finished with the window yet for Form B, all of our scores are actually trending quite nicely, based on the limited data set that I have. The window closes on January twenty-eighth, so we don't have all of the data in just quite yet. But if I, when I look at it comprehensively from two through eight, because that's where we're giving those assessments, you know, pretty much every grade level is above, sorry, every grade level is above fifty percent with the content at this point. So I, I feel like, you know, my hypothesis was that it would take a, a couple of years to see the, the the benefits of our new program and the continuity of it, but I, I feel like, you know, these scores are actually trending higher than I, than I would have supposed, so I'm actually pretty happy about that. So we do have more than seventy-five percent of our kids in algebra, and how they're performing to date, I'll actually have a better idea of that, because they'll be giving their midterms at the end of next week in, in preparation to, to get ready for high school placement and things like that. So I'll have a better idea of actually how we're doing in that regard after those midterms are finished up before February break.
Got it. That's great. Thank you. Sorry, another question coming, Ms. Hirsch.
As a follow-up to Ms. Stowe, since we focused so much on science, I had a quick question for Mr. Byrne. Well, first of all, I would also just like to state that I'm so glad that all of the hard work that went into picking Big Ideas math, and the reason that we, the committee selected it and the Board approved it, is showing back in, in positive work for our students, really, because it was such a great program, and I'm so thrilled to hear that the students are receiving it well and are actually doing so well, which takes me to my next question. So if our students really are going to be able to meet and exceed the goal of how many students are having an algebra, I know we're looking at some new textbooks for the high school, but this is a question for Mr. Byrne. So we find that a lot of students now at our middle school are advancing beyond the middle school levels, even double jump or triple jump in math, and coming into the high school triple jumped. And I was just sort of wondering what we're looking at for goals or, or going forward, you know, about adding some higher level math, either within our programs or exterior. I don't know if you're still looking at those options for those students who are coming in triple jumped. You know, a lot of, then we'll take AP BC Calc in, in, you know, junior year or, or even earlier for some of them, but, you know, so I'm just curious to, to see what we're, what we're going to be doing for those kids. Or if we've thought about really where we're going to go with that.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch, for that question. You know, certainly, we're very excited by the work that the middle school is doing right now to encourage students to follow their passion and to really develop as mathematicians, and this is a really great problem for us to have. We, we are fortunate at a high school, as you just alluded to, to have a BC calculus program that's, that's far superior to, to anyone around us. And in addition to that, we, we do have quite a few students who will then go into advanced calculus, which is an offering, which we've been able to have roughly two sections for the last number of years. And, and our students are excited to be able to, to ceiling out there. There are a handful of students, just like you alluded to, though, who may be ready for more, and right now, we've been able to meet their needs through independent studies at the generosity of our, of our teachers. Generally speaking, the kids are interested in things like linear algebra or multivariable calculus or differential equations, and so they've really taken the ball there to decide which direction they want to go in, but eventually, your point's a good one. We will need to make some decisions as a school and as a district about what other electives we want to offer beyond advanced calc. I, I know you may, may be aware from previous presentations that I've done, our, our computer science program is also blossoming.
Our our computer science program is also blossoming. And a lot of these students will also find interest in some of our AP offerings in the computer science field. So right now, that need is being met through independent study and computer science. But you're exactly right, we will need to be strategic about some additional offerings in the future.
That's fantastic, and I and I'm hoping that I see at least some some line of that in in our course catalog coming up. Because I know, like I said, there there are a lot of students coming into our schools with with higher level math. And if we can direct them to some some additional computer courses or some of these other independent study options, I think it's going to be really fantastic. And gives us time to to build something out on our own if 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 and when we need it, which may be sooner than later, hopefully.
Any other questions, team? Yep, Mr. Kittle.
Two comments. One is a sort of a side note, but if you offer linear algebra is a fantastic course, it'd be great if you offered that. I was a I was a math major in college. Just given that these are STEM reports, I just, I don't want to beat a dead horse with this, but a lot of words and not a lot of numbers in the report. And I think the challenge, everyone involved in drafting these should challenge themselves to make them very crisp in terms of here are the objectives, here's where we're tracking, here's where we're not, here's what we're going to report on next time. And it should be numbers heavy, especially in a STEM report. I would just encourage everyone to challenge themselves to how can how can you make it so that there's that it's a very objective document that comes through.
Yeah, I think that would be quite helpful, particularly in this area. And obviously, we all had questions about where we're headed for improvement and and of such. Look, the numbers are as they are, and we need to figure out a path to make sure that we're hitting our targets. And I don't want to hide it behind words, I just want the numbers.
So go ahead, Michael Joseph.
So the while while I'm piling, while piling on here, the related, I think we not related to STEM, but related to academic achievement. I do think we have to have the same kind of awareness around literacy. We know from the achievement data that we saw a few months ago, you know, we've got three quarters of our third, fourth, fifth graders. It's at proficiency, you know, in our title night in our title one schools, it's it's 50%. These are literacy concerns that are only going to continue to bubble up. They, and I think it's something as a system, we have to address quickly. There is a growing national movement around around literacy and early elementary literacy that I know many of us are aware of. That's a real concern, particularly around the units of study curriculum that we use here in Greenwich. That we really need to look at and talk about. Ed Reports called the program highly problematic in a number of in a number of areas. I only bring it up because I was reading the magnet brochure this week, you know, for my own son applying for magnet New Lebanon, which is obviously one of our, you know, title schools. The New Lebanon was touting the the curriculum as one of the reasons to go to New Lebanon. And that's, I find that I find that concerning. They particularly given all the criticism that that curriculum has gotten over the last few years. So just as much as we're focused on STEM, particularly in the early literacy, the numbers and the curriculum needs, it needs something we need to look at quickly.
Yes, so I can't remember when we see ELA, but obviously we don't have to have John and his team address that. That's a different area, but it does remind me, and I maybe I'll bring it back to policy. I agree with you, Cody, that, you know, in a STEM report, you should see numbers. But I'm I am the fact that our policy committee, I think it even predates you, Christina. It was, I remember a lot of work by Barbara and Gaetan, who worked specifically on how they wanted these reports delivered. So just as an aside, I think the administration happens to be following that guidance. So as a result, if we want changes, I think that we're going to refer that back to the policy committee to implement those changes. If you if
Changes on how we want
The style of the reports that we're seeing here as a reference to the subject matter.
Okay, well, I didn't even realize.
So there you go. Anyway, unless we have any other questions, I think we can let these guys get ready for teaching our kids tomorrow. Thank you very much. Thanks so much for staying with us. With that, let's go to 7D Policy. Oh, do you have a question? Okay, Policy Governance Committee, Policy First Read, Ms. Downey.
Good night, you know, like moving on. Okay. I'm not making a motion, right? I'm just going to present. So basically, in front of you is policy, a revised policy 9325, which came about through some requests from some board members to look at meeting, timing and conduct, primarily relating to reducing the amount of time for each speaker. And put in there, what is our normal practice of limiting it to one hour at the beginning of the meeting? And then continuing it at the end of the meeting. The intention was to clean up and streamline. It was not to stifle discussion. It was actually to help enhance having more speakers in our limited timeframe. I know Ms. Kowalski has a few thoughts on this because she was one of the proponents of discussing it. But yeah, I think I think it's been misconstrued, at least in the public comment this evening, in terms of what the intention was. Ms. Kowalski, I hand it to you.
Sure. So I realized that we have two people in the audience and I assume that there are more on still online.
Not many. We've gone from like 170 to 23. So we're losing
We're going to watch it on videotape.
All right, so I'll make this good. So certainly, I have read all of the emails that have come in and listened to all of the speakers this evening that had concerns with respect to stifling speech. First of all, I would never want to stifle anyone's speech. And had this was never an intention of what was discussed in the policy committee regarding this. In fact, the thought process was oftentimes, we end up here as a board, getting public comment for an hour. And then having community members who are still on the list that have to wait until the end of our meetings. And as we can, as I'm talking to an empty audience, I can see that oftentimes that people don't often, those people that don't get to talk at the beginning, wait till the end or then in fact, don't even talk. And no one is even listening other than us, and we're the ones that need to hear it. But the community itself is not hearing what they have to say. And oftentimes, they can't wait out the long hours of the meeting, and that's understandable. So the whole thought process behind this was actually being able to increase the number of people that could speak in an hour and not have people wait until the end of our meeting. Because it is our business meeting, and we do need to have, conduct our business. And I get it. And if we had public comment, we it could probably go on for hours. So at some point, there has to be a reasonable cutoff. So when I was doing the math, I was looking at it as, well, we're allowing 30 people to talk as opposed to 20 people to talk in an hour. And that increases 10 people more that get to talk. Now, understandable today, we did not even have a full hour's worth of comment. So that wouldn't happen every time. But I do appreciate the fact that people have something to say and that we they should be heard. I also see a maybe a conflation of issues here, which is the fact that there is a desire by the community to get an immediate response back to their comments to make sure that they are being heard and getting feedback right away. And I do see the importance of that, but that's a separate issue. I get that too. And maybe that's something this board should look at in things going forward as to how we want to address public comment in a way that the community feels that we're listening, we're hearing them, we're trying to work through these issues better. As opposed to eight, nine people with Tony Jones, Dr. Jones sitting here staring at them and not responding. I can realize the frustration in that process.
Yeah, and and following up on that, I mean, the the problem with having a dialogue during a meeting, first of all, it's been people say you're picking and choosing, you're talking to this one, the other. And then our meeting runs that much longer, right? Which counteracts the whole point of having a one hour public session. So while we acknowledge people's frustration, again, they always have the opportunity to email the board, as we all know. And they get responses to their emails. So there is a dialogue in on an email send. But what it was discussed, it does may to to me, it it, I agree, it makes a lot of sense to get more people in earlier. I do appreciate two minutes as a tough limit. You know, we probably have, you know, if you listen to it, you know, the third minute adding a lot, I know Karen's going to say a lot about it. But we're also not saying it's limited to agenda items or non agenda items. You get your two minutes regardless, right? We're not putting any constraints on what they talk about.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I I don't see how that really stifles free speech.
I would also say, look, it doesn't, there's no, there's nothing in the policy that says that you have to talk about an agenda item that specifically is not in there. And again, I know that there are probably strong opinions across the board, and that's great. That's what we're here for, and that's what we're about to talk about. But I do want to make clear, and I'll say it again, the intent was not to limit speech. The intent was to make sure we could have more speakers and more voices heard within the hour of public comment. As opposed to those having to wait until the wee hours of the morning at sometimes so that their voice could be heard in a public setting with no people in a room.
And and we did think it was worthy of a board discussion, which is why that was the other reason. While the one member of the committee wasn't there and we we weren't sure how she was going to vote, but we said, this is a first read and it's a board discussion. And that's why it was appropriate to bring it.
So many hands. Okay, I have to admit, I saw Mr. Kelly's first, and I think it was Mr. Kittle, then it was Ms. Costin.
Well, you can go first, of course, if you like.
I was just, well, no, I was just going to say, as a member of the committee, I wasn't there for the meeting. That's why I had my hand up. So I wasn't there for that discussion, but I I can I can wait. It's fine.
No, go ahead. She's a member of the committee. You're going to have to let her go first, Mr. Kelly.
Absolutely. Always I'll let Karen go first.
No, I just, I was not able to attend the meeting. It's the only one I've actually missed, and I am vehemently opposed to limiting, to cutting down the speech. And and I only say this in the fact that I'm probably, out of all the members sitting at this table, one of the one of the people who has spent the most time sitting on the side of that podium and speaking to the board. I know how incredibly difficult it is to make a coherent and cogent argument or discussion points on agenda. And oftentimes, non agenda items within a three minute time limit, especially when you have speakers who are nervous up there, it takes some time, they be. And especially if you have people that come up and address more than one topic. To me, we have one opportunity a month to hear from individuals in the community. And it's exceptionally important that we allow that that opportunity. I do appreciate that we wanted to add in something that has always been part of our, it was in our, I believe it was in our older policy and somehow got removed. And then you're adding it back, but it has been on, and I went and looked through old, all of our, my old agendas, sitting at home from well before I was ever on this board from 2016, 2015, 2014. It always stated that we took an hour of public commentary prior to the meeting and then would refer the rest of the end. In the amount of time that I've spent in this room, well, it's usually multiple different schools, but often you rarely get more than an hour of public speakers unless it's a hot button issue. And and I am thrilled that we have so many members of our community that want to come and speak and and be heard. And to me, I feel like cutting down that time when most people really make an effort to to stay within their time limit. It's very hard for me to 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 support that. That's just my ten cent opinion, and I'm only one of eight here. But it's never, and I understand it was not about limiting free speech, it was about making sure individuals had more opportunity to be heard. But it's not often that we have more than, you know, recently we have, but it's not always often that we have more than an hour. And it's just so hard to get everything done in a short window of time. That's all.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Well, I will say, Karen, I was always amazed watching you jam so many words into three minutes. I was always amazed it was all you did that. So it was really cool. But but I will not throw my colleagues under the school bus here because basically I was privy to those discussions over the years. Or maybe over the months, whatever it was, about how we could better get more speakers to say their opinion. Now, from our perspective, more is better. But for people, it's human nature, if you take something away from them, you have to give them something. And what we did here, and I I take responsibility as other board members do, is that we took something from them, looking at it from our perspective, saying, hey, we'll hear more opinions. We'll be able to hear more from our community, but we never gave them anything. So human nature is like, hey, wait a minute, you took something or are trying to take something from us. So so I do believe that our intentions, I will share those who had spoke to this point, I will share in that decision making where we misread our actions. So I don't think our actions are correct because I can't think of anything we could give back right now unless. I love that town hall concept. I really do dig that. I think that'd be kind of fun. So is it, is it possible to actually have an additional gathering by choice? So board members, some won't care for that atmosphere. I happen to like that sort of atmosphere. So is it by choice? Can we arrange something like that so we could have a group of people that could throw questions at us? We could fire things back at them. I would like to look at something like that if that's possible. So.
We've done town halls for various topics, right? We did it for many times for back to school for COVID, and then we have done it for security concerns. Yeah, we've done it. It's usually topic specific, but yeah, it's certainly something we've done. Ms. Costin.
So I, as a former broadcast professional, we deal in milliseconds. And you can cut 30 seconds off of your remarks if you just don't thank everybody repeatedly or say Happy New Year and all of that. Like, that's just, you know, you could make it to 30 and and just cut out all of the extraneous pleasantries. But that aside, you know, the RTM does allow for limiting commentary in its body. If they have a very full agenda, there can be a motion to limit comments to two minutes. And that is not debatable within the body. But you do need to vote on whether you are going to limit the commentary and try to fit more people in. So that's what one body in town does. However, I would say I would not be in favor of shortening our public comment limits.
Mr. Kittle.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how I feel about this, but some thoughts I wanted to share. One is, Joe, to your point of if we have the room to give something back, one thing we might want to consider is, I think, all of us budget an hour in our minds, regardless of how many speakers there are. Or at least I do with my limited experience here. And perhaps a give back is if there are less than 20 speakers, you could say, hey, you actually can have a, we'll fill up the block, you know, within reason, maybe cap it at five minutes. But if 10 people sign up, then, you know, everybody gets their five minutes. You're actually getting more time in certain situations. And we only utilize the two minutes if it's allowing extra people to speak. And then maybe you could even, you know, I don't know, they can always put things in writing to us before the meeting. But that was one thing I was thinking about as a give back. After hearing Karen speak about her experience, talking up there, I found that kind of convincing of just cutting it back further when people take time out of their day to come here. So I don't know, kind of mixed on this, but if the, I like the idea of allowing more people to speak because it's terrible when we have people. You know, it's like two people left and they have to sit through all the painful, everything else just to save two minutes. So I don't know, maybe the other option would be to have a little bit of flexibility on our end that if, you know, there's 40 people that want to speak, cut it down. But if there's 21, we just let that last person, we go a little bit over the schedule or whatever. I don't know. So I'm undecided. I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Yeah, that's good. Mr., sorry, Michael, Dr. Michael Joseph.
That's all right. I wanted to start, I I agree with Cody, but first I wanted to start by thanking him and wishing him a Happy New Year. The
You didn't, you aren't listening to Laura.
Look, I Look, I understand, I appreciate what the thinking of the policy committee here, the, and their approach in trying to actually try to make the meeting more participatory by Larry Moore space. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that it's the best move right now. I do think, though, if we want to talk about ways to make the meeting more productive and more efficient and more engaging and all those things, they, I do have, I do think there were three, a few things to think about, and one was what Cody just said, the, in the policy itself, instead of having this hard and fast hour, it might be worth considering giving the chair a little bit of leeway here. For example, you've got twenty-two people signed up. Do we really need to wait till three hours later for those last two people, or can the chair have that kind of discretion? Or similarly, but if there's forty-seven signed up, similarly, the chair maybe doesn't want to have that, you know, the chair discretion the other way. But I wonder if giving that kind of flexibility in the policy might, might be appropriate, because yeah, most of the time, we don't fill the whole hour. But if we do, that flexibility might be helpful. So that's one, the first point. The second point, the, which I'm unclear of, is I was talking to Dr. Jones at one point, and she felt it was at least our procedure, and I understand that. There was definitely a, there's a philosophy, at the very least, of not responding to comment. And I get that. We want to get, we want to, we want to, we're here to absorb, we're here to listen. I think in this day and age, I'm not sure that that philosophy serves us well anymore as well. Certainly, if there's misinformation said out there, I think it's incumbent upon us at the public meeting, at the end of public comment, not back and forth, but at the end of that period, to correct it immediately, because we've always have people, particularly in Zoom, tuning in for the first time. And they hear things, and they hear something out there, they take it, oh, I didn't know that, that's terrible. We need to correct that immediately, I think. But at the same time, I think, you know, it's incumbent upon us to acknowledge concerns, and when we can comment, you know, which we all ended up doing around the lunch thing anyway. I think that's an important aspect of the meeting that we probably need to account for. The, I think too often in the past, in past years, when you've had an angry crowd here, talking about whatever it was, and then we've moved on to our agenda, and haven't said anything at all, it gives the impression of gaslighting, and I don't think that serves, serves as well, in all honesty. So I think that's something else to think about in our approach there. And then finally, just real quick, because I've given people this pitch before.
You're over two minutes.
I'm sorry. Happy New Year. My third point, the, my final point, the, I've given this pitch before, the idea of flipping aspects of the meeting. The curriculum is a perfect example of that. Instead of having our administrators at ten, I timed it, it was at ten fifteen at night, giving that presentation, they could easily have recorded that, sent it to us ahead of time. The whole community would have then been able to see it in a much more effective and efficient way, because nobody was here when they were talking. They, and then our board meeting time could have been spent actually talking about it, the, and being more productive and efficient. So I think all these things might be, oh, there are ways to make these more efficient, I think.
So, Ms. Hirsch?
I just wanted to acknowledge the two, two comments that were made. One, in, again, having spent a lot of time here, in prior years, and I'm sure our one attendee can say the same. Our chair has always had the flexibility. If we've looked, you know, we do the math when we see the number of people signed up. And if there is one or two, if there are one or two other individuals waiting to speak, the chair has always had the opportunity to make the motion to extend the time for public comment. And we've often done that many years in the past. We've had some seriously heavy agenda items that we need to get through, which is oftentimes, I think, why in the past year or so, we haven't been doing that. But, you know, that has something the chair has always had the privilege of doing. And the, and the same with, the chair's always had the privilege, if we have a heavy agenda item, a heavy agenda, with a lot of deep discussion topics, to then, at that particular meeting, and it's even in the policy now, to limit the speech from three minutes to two minutes, if need be. So that flexibility has always been there. And I know from years past, and even from tonight, when things are addressed, you know, oftentimes the superintendent or members of the board will ask questions or address statements made, or when it is, when individuals are speaking specifically on agenda items, we will bring that up in our discussion. And I personally, I really value having the opportunity to hear from the community via email, phone calls, hearing from them in a public forum such as this as well, especially when we're having discussions and making some decisions, because it's important that we represent all different viewpoints. So I love that opportunity.
Great. Can I just add one thing? Oh, sorry, I was gonna give my two cents. Go ahead, Ms. Costin.
Are we allowed to go out of order? In other words, this conversation might have been very helpful, like, at the beginning of the meeting.
So we can move agenda items if it's not a special meeting. I think this was listed as a special meet, what, are we, are we back on our regular calendar? This is business. So then we could have, you could make a motion to move agenda items around. I think that this was put here because we had to move the, we usually put policy, discussion, and actions that go together, but because we had to have Andy come tonight, we moved some things around.
Yeah, and this would have been useful for the public to hear, other than Brian.
Brian is the public. He can share it widely.
Tweet about it.
So, exactly. And by the way, I mean, we are in the world of like, what is it, a hundred and forty, forty characters or less, and TikTok videos are thirty seconds, but.
I, can I just, I think it's great that you guys put this policy change forward, and that's what the public comment was focused on, because if you hadn't, the public comment would have been focused on Title IX, and we'd still, still be in it right now.
To be honest with you, if Title IX was on the agenda, they were, and it's the third time it's been on the agenda, third time it's been on the agenda, so, you know, people saying no public comment, it was here three times.
So just my two cents on this, and this was something that, you're right, Joe, I know I was talking about in the policy committee years ago. I think that there were some emails today, and then from the public, that felt that this was a reflection of this particular group, and I can assure you that this is, this is, I mean, I hate to say it, but this is a pretty light group in the now five years I've been on the board. There was school start time that people are going to forget about, special education, the advanced learning program, give me something else. I, for.
Racial balance.
Racial balance, yeah, that's for, yeah, so. Redistricting, let's go back through all of the years that, believe me, we have a lot of an engaged community, and I think that's awesome. So the real goal here, I know, and I was even, I was an advocate for, but I love all this, this, this discussion, is I saw this as an opportunity to give more people a chance to speak, especially because when we do have like a forty speaker list, which we have had, and I've had working parents reach out to me, sort of saying, I really, really wanted to talk tonight, but I just couldn't hang on until eleven o'clock, because I had to get up in the morning and go to work. And, and I get that, and for some reason, I don't require as much sleep. But I, I think that that was the goal here, was to try to actually hear from more people ahead of our agenda so that we could be informed when dealing with the topics. And it was actually meant to be more engaging, more transparent, more communication. So it's ironic that it was taken any other way, but it was actually meant to be a really, really positive thing. But that's, that's okay. That's why it's good, it's a first read, and then we're having this conversation, we can continue. I also like your idea of having some flexibility. The only thing I worry about with that is that if I ever made a call to go from three minutes to two minutes, for some people that are more scripted, like, um, as you can see, I'm very off-the-cuff person, so that would be okay for me, but there are some people.
I think, I would actually think, you can't tell people they have three minutes, and they show up and they've got two. You know, you could give it, say you got two and you get five. That's a different problem, you know.
When do we know how many speakers there are?
Not until noon of that day.
So can we tell them at noon that, hey, there's a big roster, so?
I guess, I'll give it to you, Karen, would you be able to have it at that point?
I have had to, it has happened before, where they cut the time down, and I've had to sit in the audience and cut stuff and pull stuff out, and yes, it's often the thank-yous and whatever else. But being said, we also have to remember the fact that prior to COVID, we didn't have public, you know, online signup. People would show up at the meeting, and they had to sign up when they got here to speak. We may be very well, when COVID's done, going back to that, or having the opportunity to have people tune in via this, you know, Zoom, but come here to speak to us, because it's really a much better opportunity for us to have somebody face-to-face to hear from them, instead of hearing from, from Zoom. So for those of you who are new to this, you used to have to, I mean, I remember rushing here, because you wanted to be one of the first speakers to sign up on a topic, and you'd be like, running through the door to like, sign up, and there was a line of people at the door waiting to sign up. It always was, you signed up for agenda, non-agenda, it was all, but you had to be here to have that opportunity. So we are in a different mode now with, with having Zoom. But, oh yes, we had people stay here till one in the morning, when meetings used to go to one in the morning, waiting to speak.
We're tracking there. Okay, go ahead.
I think, I actually think we should go back, you know, that that timely cutoff isn't, you know, it does restrict speech if somebody forgot to sign up at noon, by noon on the day of, then all of a sudden, they're out of luck. So I welcome the opportunity when we can just have the signup sheet, and I do remember those days, that right outside the door, and we grab it, and they had to, in fact, I think I remember you had to put your name and what you were gonna talk about.
And your address.
And your address.
Or email, whatever.
So I think, you know, I welcome that back as well. Again, I think this is a really healthy discussion, and I think it's a healthy discussion in a way that we're trying to figure out the best way to give the community all the opportunity in the world to come and talk to us, as well as trying to figure out a way, the best way to respond and be responsive, and make, and understand that we are hearing them as opposed to us just saying that, that they're actually feeling that as well. So I just, I want to continue the discussion. I do think, you know, we can take this back to policy committee and kind of take everybody's thoughts. I'm not sure where we'd land at this point, but I might have to watch the video myself on all of this, but I know you did. So, but I do think we need to come up with something. Well, obviously, it's clearly not this. It's got to be a variation of it, and a working, and I think it's just a work in progress.
Agreed. So with that, we'll bring it back to policy, and then we'll have this come back to us when policy has a good solution. So with that, I am putting on the next action item on the table. It's Thank you. Making a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Board of Education meeting calendar. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Col. We are ready, well, Dr. Jones, let me turn it over to Dr. Jones, and she could tell you what she changed.
There were, there were two requests from the last meeting. One was to add a meeting in October, so that is reflected in here. There was a request to perhaps look at March or April, but when I went back through my notes, there was not necessarily consensus. And when we had our executive meeting, we did discuss, we can always add a meeting, but it's difficult, it's not difficult, we could do it now, but we would rather add than be canceling the meeting because of the budget calendars that fall during that same time, because all of you have a lot of meetings during March, April.
So I guess my question was more, less about amending the dates as far as amending the topics, if that's something, how that works, if that's something we can do or not do, what is that?
That's done in policy. They come up with the plan, but you should always, yeah, provide feedback on how, when do you work to that?
We, we, we set the agenda, the calendar agenda usually in the spring.
Oh, no, 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 the opposite, not amending the dates, I meant, amending the topics that are.
Like the topics, like the policy committee with the, with the chair, or the, I think, policy, I, I and Dr. Jones put the care, takes our calendar dates and adds the topics to it, and I think we vote on it in June. So it's usually done in like April, May, so you have time.
So if we wanted to add an agenda item, so for example, the, we talked at the executive session last time about having an executive session later, you know, next month, so they, we bring the high school leadership back about to follow up on the lockdown incident. The, how would we go about adding that to this, this agenda plan, for example?
Well, you can, we can talk about, you would talk about that in, now, this is the long-term calendar, like. We're gonna get to that in like five minutes, hopefully. So, me, I, I think this was a good addition. I think that it was wise not to put anything in there yet for the spring, because the spring always gets so loaded up with budget meetings with the BET and the RTM, but we could always, of course, add. So let's take this to a vote, unless I see any other discussion. Okay. All in favor of the 2022-2023 Board of Ed meeting calendar? That passes eight zero. Thank you very much. Now I'm gonna put on the table approving the financial and staffing report. Can I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Downey. Okay. And Mr. O'Keefe?
Hi, everybody. So as of December thirty-first, our operating plan actuals are at seventy point two million dollars. It's forty point eight percent attainment of our full-year budget of one seventy-one point nine. That compares to forty-two percent attainment in the prior year period. So we're a little bit better than the attainment last year. But some of that is explainable with transportation expense. On a year-to-year basis, we're up one point six million, or two point four percent. Drivers of the year-to-year growth salaries are up eight hundred thousand dollars, or about one point four percent. Supplies are up one point four million, or seventy-six, seventy-nine percent. And that's, again, as I mentioned, last couple of months, the, the year-to-year impact of the reduced level of spending in the first half of last year, which was the result of that pre-spend activity that occurred at year-end in, in full year twenty. And then services overall are down seven hundred thousand, and that's driven by late transportation billing, so that should self-correct you know, in the next couple of months. On capital, overall, our capital available balances twenty-seven point two million dollars as of January fourth, which is down about two hundred K from the November financial report. Of that twenty-seven point two balance, twelve point one of it is from older projects, so prior to full year twenty-two, and is down about a half a million since the November report. And from last September, we're down about sixteen million dollars, or about fifty-seven percent. So we're really making progress, as, as is our goal, to really knock out the older projects in a quicker pace. Also, in the, in the overall balances, two and a half million from building committee projects. So there's four projects, New Lab, Landville, Mesa, and Hamilton Avenue. And they're all multi-year projects, but they're all, pretty much, they're all finished, we're just waiting to close them out with the audit from the state. So once we do that, we'll be able to take that off the available balance. Food services, it's kind of a repeat. Still early to say where we're gonna be, but we are, we will underrun our, our cash sales budget, there's no doubt about that. And we will significantly overrun our, our state reimbursements. The state reimbursements are coming in very strong. So it's, 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 I think we're gonna exceed state reimbursements by a really significant amount. On expenses, we're expecting that will underrun budget by a small amount in salaries and in food costs. And, and as far as unbudgeted transportation costs, we will recover that from grants. So, and, and that's it for the report.
Ms. Col.
So Sean, sorry for the probably naive question, but what are the old product, projects in the capital that haven't gotten done? Like, what are we waiting, and what's the, like, why are they taking so long?
There, you know, like windows projects which take time. They're typically multi-year projects that, you know, we can only work on the, during the summers. So there are projects that are not major projects that are multi-year in nature. So that's the general reason for things not to be completed. Also, one other reason is that there could be a bundled set of projects, and which, you know, some of these projects can be completed. and which, you know, some of these projects can be completed, but we cannot close them out until we finish the other bundled projects within that bundle. So that is a, a reason for it as well. Those are the two major reasons.
So then the question is, have we paid on this or is this money that's sitting in an account?
Let's say that again. Have we?
Right. So for example, when we say, when you say, for example, we're currently at 27.2 million, which is a drawdown, have we already paid? So is that 27 million sitting in a, in a bank account that GPS runs? Or have we already paid the contractor that money and we're waiting for him to complete the project?
That 27 million is totally free and clear, has not been encumbered or spent.
So this is, are we making interest on that money and what's happening to that interest? And, and if we're not spending it, why aren't we investing it in make, turning it into something until we're paying out on it? I mean, I just think that that's a logical way to handle it, but I, I don't know where the money sits.
I'd have, that's really a town question. They, they handle the.
It sits with the town. We're just, remember, we're like an, an, a, a division of the town. So we don't run our own finances. It's not like we're investing our money.
So the town is.
The town is the BET owns the money.
Depends on where, um, you know, there could be, could be, you know, low interest bonds, you know, low risk activity, uh, that they'll probably be making a nominal amount of money on.
So I'll direct that question to Dan Ozemeyer, since he's the new chair of the BET and say what's happening to it. Because I'm just curious.
That would be the right channel. Anything else here? Okay, seeing none. The motion on the table is approving the financial report for the period ended December 31, 2021. All in favor. That passes eight zero. Okay, thank you. We are now on to, and Michael Joseph, you are up, agenda planning.
So I had a couple, thank you. Happy New Year. They, um, so I had.
Thank you.
So, um, I had three, three thoughts on possible agenda topics. So one, as you, as I already mentioned on the previous issue, bringing back an executive function to hear, executive session to talk about, um, to hear from the high school leadership on, um, changes they made to their procedures. The, was something we said we, we, we hope to do. Probably would have to be executives. The other suggestion, um, I had was if we could consider, given the hopeful, the hope for strategic plan guideline, consider the, um, June retreat, the board discussion scheduled for the June business meeting. Right now, board goals are scheduled for the June business meeting. If we could move that to the June retreat in the hopes that then we act upon them at the June business meeting, if that makes sense. So we have a discussion of board goals at the June retreat. And then action on, at the June business meeting. Right now, I think, right now, we don't talk about it till the June business meeting.
No, so on June 2nd, info, current board goals and self-evaluation. And then on June 16th, it's the action.
Yes, would be my suggestion.
That's, that's how it's laid out.
Okay.
Actually, I don't see the action. I see the info. Just the opposite.
Right, no, that's what I mean. Instead of the info, you move that to the retreat. You move that to June 2nd.
Good point. We didn't do the goals this year. That's a good point. Because the board was changing. So that's not even happening.
You're saying, so the board goals that are on for June 2nd for info, we would keep, but then just add the action item? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
Except we don't have any board goals.
You said that the board goes for next year.
No, he's got.
For next year.
It's in there for June 2nd.
Yeah, that's, that was current, but we should do it for future. We should take it as a, okay, to pivot to making the retreat for future goals. Got it. Good idea. Okay, you, you said three. That was number two, right? Oh, okay. Um, what am I missing? I thought there was something else. No, I only have two things written down for me. Oh, okay, fine. Got it. Okay. And then I think if I'm correct, off on February 3rd, we could remove the Cardinal Stadium Safety Road ed specs because it looks like we are good there. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
Karen.
One, do we have this course study guide that was presented tonight? Do we have that on for an action item? Oh, it's on for February 24th. Okay.
It is on February 24th.
The other thing that I would suggest is I am going to be presumptuous that the mask mandate, mask executive order will be lifted. And we should put that on the calendar to deal with that as soon as possible. So why not go ahead and put that on for February 24th?
Because that wouldn't be within a week if it went off on the 15th.
So we'd have to call a special meeting.
We would have to, yep.
Okay.
Yes, and it's right in the middle of occasion. Good point. But yeah, we'll see. I mean, she's saying she's, we're hearing that they're going to not wait until the 15th. Like they're going to make some sort of decision earlier, but who knows?
Yeah, the superintendents in, in the state have requested that.
Okay, all right. I just want to be ready.
Agreed. All right, seeing nothing else. Can I get a motion? Ms. Costin. Do I have a second? Okay, all right. Well, and I will give it to Mr. Kittle. And is it okay with you, Mr. Kelly? We'll give it to you back next time. Okay, all in favor? Eight zero. We are only an hour behind my schedule. Thank you so much. Have a good night.